Good evening and welcome to the August 26, 2025, meeting of the Milton Select Board. Please join me if you can and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We are going to go ahead and move to public comment. Our board rules on public comment are that we have a lot, a total of 21 minutes, which Mr. Milano will keep track of, and that each speaker is limited to three minutes. I will let the speakers know when they are at 2 minutes and 30 seconds. Sometimes I miss it and sometimes I only say you got 20 seconds left because I'm paying rapt attention to what you're saying. It's not a conspiracy. I just forget to look at my phone. So I'm guessing that Ms. Augustine, you're going to be our first speaker this evening. Do we have a sign up sheet? Anybody else?
Actually, I'm the first and only one.
Only on this? You're the only one on the sheet? Okay.
I do just want to mention before you start your timer, I'm having difficulty talking this evening, so I'll talk as fast as I can.
Okay.
Yep, car accident, back pain.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that. Alright, so we'll get you, go ahead and get started.
Thank you very much. The first item, I do have four topics, the election, and I ask you to do the right thing. The bylaws and the laws of the state actually allow the funding of an election. And just listening to you last week, I know you have a very heavy load of items. So having a fifth Select Board member is really critical to getting through what you need to get through. Second item is the hiring of a law firm. And since I was on the Board of Selectmen, this is firsthand knowledge, especially during the Quarry Hills contract, the present, I wanted a new law firm even 30 years ago. The, I was the one who questioned the representative if they also represented the developer, Quarry Hills, while we were meeting to issue a contract. In fact, I provided each of you, voices coming back, provided each of you with the staircase lawsuit that this existing, we should immediately be refunded because of the federal law, American Disabilities Act. Thirdly, if town council, I know that the town administrator wasn't here during this time. This is a very serious, sensitive issue. So I would simply say that personnel issues must be addressed confidentially. When I was the selectman, we actually had to fire a police officer for misbehaving. And what I heard during the discussion last week should have been in executive session with the person allowed to have an attorney with them in executive session. I'm very concerned that we could have exposed ourselves to a liability. It has to do with the, you are all person, I'll leave it at, you are all personnel of the town of Milton, Select Board members of Personnels. And that's what the law provides. I'll just quickly, comes and goes the voice, I'll just quickly read through. Last Tuesday, we had an impromptu roads and traffic safety gathering. Many town meeting members were there, has a former selectman, Chair of the Warrant Committee, Public Safety Committee for years, and a town meeting member since 1983. I request that the Select Board has the immediate obligation to save more lives from death and disabilities on Mass Highway Route 28, Randolph Ave from Chickataby to Reed's Dale Road down to St. East. The interesting thing in the discussion of
30 seconds.
Into the discussion of talking to some people about having a meeting, other areas of the town were interested. So July 5, three people died. July 8, the town administrator gave an update at that meeting. July 22, there was public comment. You heard about that. Mast dot report, you asked for it. You had a subcommittee Mast dot got you the report within days and within seven days it was publicized. August 18, the Select Board agenda included Route 28. However, there were only two members, so it questions whether that was legal because was that a quorum? August 19, I'm just going to lead you, we broke the town into four zones. And today, it happened to me on Granite Ave, an ambulance had to get down Granite Ave where the construction is, and he could not get through. The Randolph ambulances have a system. They can turn the light off. The fire chief has checked into it. None of our lights do that yet.
Okay, we're past, well past time now.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
No delays, no more deaths, no more injured people. And I have the summary here for you.
Thank you.
Oh, my God. Like I said, it was a car accident.
I'm sorry to hear that.
Lose my voice. That's why I am so, oh, good. Thank you. Wait, I need some for the Mast dot. And here's for you all to view, the gathering.
Mr. Wells, if you want to. And we do have one speaker with their hand up online, Ms. Felton. Mr. Milano, if you could promote her. Ms. Felton, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. You're a little quiet, but yes.
I'll try not to be too quiet. Thank you, Deborah Felton. Tell me to member precinct two. I just wanted to speak on two matters, although I could speak on many. One, it's come to my attention that there seems to be a proliferation of ADUs in Milton. And I'm not sure if it's the Select Board or the Planning Board or whoever the new Planning Director will be, but please consider in the future addressing this unregulated matter because it is really concerning to me. We had an AD, we have an ADU that has just appeared in back of me. It had a fire pit and I thought my house was on fire. So I think that for the health and public safety of the residents here that we need to look at regulating ADUs.
Ms. Felton, can I just ask a quick clarifying question? Do you mean ADUs or Airbnbs?
I'm sorry. I don't mean ADUs. I mean Airbnb.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. I definitely misspoke.
That's totally fine. Thank you. Please go ahead.
Okay. The other thing, I just want to talk about Article 7. We have discussed this a lot in my house. Many of you know that my husband is a retired District Court Judge. And we're really confused about this article and not, we just, we have a question about why do we need to sanction drinking outside on public property? I mean, do people always have to drink when gathered together in outside spaces? And so as you're considering Article 7 for the warrant and if it does make it to town meeting floor, I really think we, it's a bad role model. The schools have done a lot, the Milton Coalition about drinking in teenagers. And times have changed and we're both very concerned about that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't see any other hands up online and I don't see any hands appear in person. So I'm guessing that we are finished with Citizen Speak. So moving along, we're going to move to the item four, Mass DOT update regarding potential changes to Randolph Ave Route 28. And I know we have some folks here from DOT, so please. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Haggerty is going to excuse herself.
Okay. Thank you Chairman Zoll, members of the Select Board and Administrator Milano. On behalf of, you know, Massachusetts Department of Transportation, we're happy to come back and address you today regarding the Route 28 corridor Randolph Street, Randolph Avenue, sorry. Dan Fielding is unfortunately is out this week, was not even below 10, but on behalf, thank you all for giving us this opportunity. As you know, we were here back in July. And at that time, you know, we were looking at quick options that we thought we could do, you know, when, when the immediate thought was that we would just put something up down the middle of the road. You know, we quickly looked back at, you know, what that would have entailed, you know, and I did, I will admit that I was the one that said, we'd like to try to get something in place by Labor Day to do it right and do it the correct way to get the safety and the benefit for what we're looking to do here. Much more is involved in that process. You know, just dropping Barry down the middle of the road is not only going to push problems to another area. So we wanted to take a harder look at the options. So what we have tonight was that we have a presentation that's going to walk you through the evaluation of a couple of different alternatives. It'll find its way back to a hybrid, which we're going to present, which you think is the best. It solves providing for access where needed to allow cross movement traffic and entering and exiting on the side streets, but also provides that center median protection where it's, where it's important. So with that, I want to turn it over to Kayla Sousa from our Chief Engineers Office, who will present, start the presentation. Sorry.
Sure.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for having us. Thanks for the intro, Neil. So with us today, my name is Kayla Sousa. I'm the Senior Program Manager. I manage our intersection and safety programs out of the Chief's Office and Mast dot Headquarters. We've always, I've always been involved in this project in the background, tracking the intersection and have worked on similar quick build safety projects. So I was tagged to manage this effort in coordination with Headquarters Traffic in District Six. So big team has been involved in this in the past month. With us today, you just heard from Neil, we have Mark Abbott from the District Six Traffic Office, Matthew Jasmine, the District Six Project Development Engineer, and then our consultant, our design firm, Howard Stein Hudson. From HSH, we have Jessica Lizza, and I'll hand it over to her at some point to go through the design in a little bit more detail. So for an agenda, we'll keep it pretty brief on background and existing conditions because we're coming back to the Select Board at this point. There's been a lot of public involvement on the corridor to date through the intersection project and now also the corridor. But I will give a little background of how we got here, remind everyone of the existing conditions and what we know about the roadway so far. We'll look at the alternatives that we evaluated this summer, one being the drop the barrier in the road approach that I think at first we were sort of leaning towards. And we'll talk about how we evaluated the different options and came to our preferred that we shared last week with a smaller working group of town staff, fire police, and some of the legislators. And then we'll talk about next steps and feedback. Heading into background, just to orient everyone, at this point, we're talking about Route 28 Randolph Ave, the corridor, thinking past the Chickataby intersection project, the limits that we are evaluating for our pilot road diet and safety project are from Route 28 at Reed's Dale Road heading south, tying into that roundabout project, which is still progressing independently. So all the major intersections highlighted on the project limits and then all the residences and driveways along the way. So there's many steps, I think, for Route 28 and the design development, but just for some of the highlights here, we've been at the, the roundabout project at Chickataby for, you know, a little over seven years, I would say. That was initiated as a isolated intersection project for the number one crash location in the state. And it's close to being ready to advertise for construction. But through the public process of the intersection project, it was consistently communicated to us that the residents are also concerned about safety along the corridor north of the intersection. And so a road safety audit had already been done at the intersection, but it was expanded for the project limits that you saw on the slide previously. A road safety audit is when town and state staff get together with fire and police, review crashes over a certain period of time, identify issues and work together toward short and midterm and long term countermeasures. So the district's been sort of chipping away as many short term countermeasures as they can, speed feedback signs and signal timing. But we also enlisted HSH to do a corridor study, you know, following that road safety audit, sort of over the summer into the winter and spring, also initiated through public concern about what could we do from the RSA and then also evaluating what the roundabout would do for access. So it was very focused on that. And then also at the town's request, that did evaluate a road diet. So that brings us to this summer where we're gearing up to pretty quickly design and implement a road diet, which I suppose we haven't defined yet, but that would remove travel lanes from Randolph Ave from Reed's Dale to Chickataby to some extent with widening at the intersections. So that's where we're at today. So why would we do a pilot road diet? Safety, obviously, first and foremost, that's the primary goal of the pilot road diet. It's due to the crash history along the corridor, ongoing public safety concerns and advocacy from the community. Why to do it in a pilot sense? We do these pilots sometimes so that we can incrementally improve a corridor instead of waiting for a full reconstruction project, as you've seen through the Chickataby project and probably others in town. It can take a little bit if you're trying to solve sort of all the problems on the corridor, but if you hone in on a few, safety being the primary one, what can you do right now? And another reason to do it in the pilot sense is to do a field test of the road diet that was studied in the corridor study. So we use traffic modeling to try to anticipate what will happen if you do something like take away a lane or two lanes on Route 28. But at some point, you can only calibrate those models so much to assume what humans will do. Will they stay on 93 instead of cutting through Milton? Will they go into the neighborhoods? You know, we hope not and we'll try to mitigate that, but the models can only go so far. And so the point of piloting is to see what happens. And then the goals here are simple, reduce fatalities and serious injuries and reduce speeds and conflicts along the corridor. So what makes something a pilot road diet? Like what were the constraints that we had put upon ourselves to allow us to do this quickly, both from an implementation standpoint and then also be flexible to adjust? Because we have studied this, it is thought out, but things do happen and pilots are meant to be able to be adjusted and changed as we monitor. So the temporary materials that we can change, things that are in play, is changing the pavement markings, so the paint on the roads, adding signage, and then using sort of modular curbing type temporary vertical barrier materials to restrict lefts in some areas. And we'll get into that. We can also continue to tweak the signal timing and it's necessitated actually when you start to restrict lefts to see where you can add U-turns and left turns. And again, we'll get into the specifics of the design. And then really limited traffic signal equipment changes are possible. We can't be replacing mast arms or doing full signal reconstruction or adding in new signals, but we could make adjustments to the signals that are there to allow us to do the design that we're going to show today. So what's not in play is major reconstruction. So we're working within the curb to curb for the most part, which means, you know, no major street scape or sidewalk reconstruction. We're not moving the curb line because of the utility coordination and impacts that that would entail. No intersection redesign, just staying within the curbs. And then, of course, our right of way process takes some time, so no property takings. Okay, so we'll do a quick review of existing conditions. If you don't know, Route 28 Randolph Ave has four travel lanes, two in each direction with really pretty minimal shoulders and sidewalks, no bike facilities. And then because the curb to curb space is taken up in this way, there's not really opportunities for left turns, dedicated left turn lanes or pocket lefts or anything like that. So this is pretty consistent, except that, you know, some of the major intersections. And then from the road safety audit and the corridor study, I mean, we know a lot about this corridor. Here's just a bulleted list of maybe the summary. We know that there's congestion, that there's a lot of traffic during the peak periods, both from neighbors trying to use this as what it is in arterial to get to where they're going and likely cut through traffic. And because it's corresponding with the peak periods, you know, definitely commuting, school traffic, there are high travel speeds of vehicles when there's not congestion, especially off peak. People are going very fast. As I mentioned, with the cross section, there's a lack of left turn lanes or turn lanes in general. People are having difficulty entering and exiting driveways and side streets, which is the, one of the main concerns behind the corridor study. There's some substandard, unsignalized intersection geometry, so sightlines that make it difficult when you're approaching the street to see if a car is coming on Route 28, making it challenging to judge those gaps. Signal timing evaluation was needed at the time of the road safety audit and the lack of bicycle accommodations. So on a pilot project, we're not going to get everything and that's not the point. The point is to focus on the, the most urgent need and the highest need, which for us is that bottom line, which is that the straight alignment of the road, the high speeds and the high volumes are creating safety concerns and really safety issues. So those safety concerns just sort of shown in data points, starting with the intersections. So there's three intersections within our project limits that are considered high crash. So they're within the top 5% of the greater Boston region. There's Route 28 at Reed's Dale, which had 13 crashes, including five fatal injury in the most recent closed year. So the most recent, the current crash clusters are 2019 to 2021. So that's a crash cluster. For that time period, Route 28 at Chickataby, of course, has been a crash cluster in the top 10 or so for probably as long as we've been checking crash clusters. That had 69 in the most recent study period with 37 fatal injury and is still the number one crash location in the state. And then Route 28 at Reed Street and Access Road, while not a current crash cluster, was one in 2018 to 2020 with 17 crashes and seven fatal injury. So in addition to the intersections, we also calculate high crash corridor segments. And so this map is showing in the black dashed lines, corridor segments along Randolph Ave that are in the top 5% again of the greater Boston region. These are essentially Reed's Dale Road to Pleasant Street with, I don't have these memorized and it's a little blocked for me. Five crashes from 2017 to 2021. Highland Street to just north of Ridgewood with 10 observed crashes and then Hillside to Susie Lane with 17. And there's also a high crash segment south of Chickataby beyond the Milton border. So what are, what do we draw up to look at for these pilot alternatives? So essentially, we started with two concepts, so two cross sections that would have some variability as they approached major intersections like signals, but this would be the most common typical section. So alternative one is really a pretty standard road diet as defined by federal highway. It's the conversion of a four lane road into a three lane road where you have one lane in each direction of through travel and then a center left turn lane to facilitate left turns into side streets and driveways and businesses. We have some examples of where these exist in Massachusetts that Jessica will show a bit later. Alternative two was sort of the drop down the zipper barrier that we have now, medianize this road, remove all conflicts and see how we fare with, with traffic with everyone taking U-turns at major signals. Both of these provide a wider shoulder, which is great, get some space, five feet on the two way left turn and seven in the median barrier. So originally, these were the two we looked at. And we wanted to find a kind of quantifiable way to compare them. So we came up with an evaluation matrix that for some of these factors had, you know, a data driven methodology behind them, like actually calculating the reduction of crashes and speeding and delay. And then other one sort of relied on a more qualitative case study, research, engineering judgment approach, and then also feedback from police and fire. So, but our four main categories are safety, which was primarily looking at the reduction in crashes, especially fatal and injury, reducing the number of conflict points and on and off peak speeding. Operations is next, which is trying to calculate the level of delay that each of these cross sections will add to people traveling when you remove two lanes from a major road like this. Access was the third, so the ability to make left turns, access these businesses and residences, like sort of the convenience factor as well as emergency vehicle access. And then the fourth, which is unique to a pilot, was implementation. And so how quickly can we deploy each alternative? What are the requirements for maintaining them? This is supposed to be up through the winter. And then as I started to mention before, flexibility to, to adjust. So we tried to put our evaluation matrix into these like little circles. So an empty circle is negative and is not meeting the goals or it doesn't apply. And then sort of a judgment of something that partially met one of the four goals and then completely meeting the goals. So when you compare alternative one and two, just to steep the, you know, probably known fact, no alternatives that are going to remove lanes will improve operations. Alternative one with the two way left turn lane improved access and was well suited for a pilot because of the kind of the simplicity of the materials being paint. Alternative two, which was that, you know, median barrier with probably some sort of steel on it, improved safety the most because it removed all conflicts with turning vehicles and prevented people from crossing over into the other lane of travel, but introduced the most access challenges, kind of built compounding the operational delay that we'd be adding and was, you know, less convenient for quick implementation and flexibility. So then we came up with this new alternative, which is a hybrid, which made sort of two changes to alternatives one and two. It essentially applies the cross section of one and two as appropriate based on the context of like that part of Route 28. So depending on where you're at, which block you're at and, you know, side streets and the needs of the road, it would alternate. And then it also looked at using a more modular material, which we will, we'll have to order, but then we'll be more, you know, flexible for changes that are needed. So the overall scope of what we're calling the hybrid alternative, which is our current preferred, is removing one through lane in each direction of travel, applying two way left turn lanes in area of dense side streets and driveways, which Jessica will show, adding the median barrier in targeted locations for access management, and then signal timing changes to add protected lefts now that we have space for that with the removal of the extra threes and to accommodate the U-turns that will be required. So this is a schematic drawing. Jessica will share like a more conceptualized design, but essentially this shows what I was trying to describe, which is that we're switching between the two way left turn cross section, which is shown here in yellow, to the modular curb barrier. And there's a picture on the top right of like what that material could look like. What the schematic doesn't really show is the, the brakes in the barrier at major signals, but we'll get into that when I hand things off. And so then when we added this alternative into the evaluation matrix, we saw that it approached the corridor in a more balanced way, still very much prioritizing safety, but attempting to maintain or strengthen access and allow us to really pilot this and learn from it and, and adjust as needed. Okay, I'm going to hand things off to Jessica now.
Don't let it away. We're going to have questions. Lisa, I will. No, not yet. We'll wait, we'll wait.
Thanks, Keela. All right. So getting into some more of the details of the pilot design, the next few slides, we'll walk through first the cross sections again, and then some local examples, and then we'll go into section views of different areas of the corridor. So this is showing the same graphic that Kayla just walked through. So this is representative of the cross section where we're proposing the modular curbing barrier. And the goals through here are to, you know, reduce the conflict points by, you know, limiting turning movements and maintaining access in the areas where the two way left turn lane will be provided. And so this is proposed in areas that do not have that same dense access needs along the corridor. So less of the business areas and more of the areas that are adjacent to parkland that we'll show in a bit. So some examples of tactical medians. On the left of the screen, there is an example in Route Six down on the Cape with a two lane roadway that has the modular curbing median down the center. This was implemented as a safety measure. Unfortunately, we don't have like before after information here, but that's one location that you can see this. And on the right is a much more like urban location in Medford, where this was utilized to restrict turning movements. And then here we have an example of the application in Hingham during a road diet pilot along Route 3A. This cross section shows the two way left turn lane where you have the single travel lane in each direction and then a two way left turn lane in the center that vehicles would be able to enter to safely make left turns in either direction. The shoulders are five feet in this alternative. So similar to the barrier, there's The shoulders are five feet in this alternative, so similar to the barrier, they're still wider than existing. The barrier shoulders would be about seven feet, but vary through different sections as the corridor width changes. Since the two-way left turn lane is a bit wider, the shoulders would be more about five feet through this stretch of the corridor.
Quick question, go back to that picture. Because I think I would know the answer when I'm asking, I want to ask you. Are you proposing putting sidewalks on both sides of the entire, because much of it is only sidewalks on one side, not both sides?
No, this is just, yeah.
This is just an illustration of.
Yes.
But the sidewalk layout, as it is on that section of roadway, is going to stay the same?
Yes.
Which I believe is just one side. Okay, thank you.
So an example of a two-way left turn lane. This is Route 28 through Redding. And this was a road diet pilot that was made permanent because it was considered successful. And on the right on the table are some safety statistics from before and after that do show significant increase in non-fatal injury crashes as well as property damage only crashes. So about an 11% decrease of non-fatal injury and 37% of property damage only. Other examples of two-way left turn lanes that show some of the treatments that are proposed along here. The example photo on the left of Route 114 in Middleton shows a center two-way left turn lane that transitions into a left turn lane on a traffic signal. And then the example photo on the right shows the two-way left turn lane transitioning into, you know, a painted median with the modular flex posts. So we'll expect transitions like this along Route 28. Right, and then here on this screen again is just generally where we're recommending these two different cross sections. So towards the north near Reed's Dale Road, we're proposing to, you know, maintain and strengthen that full access where we can with the two-way left turn lane. Approaching Reed's Dale Road, we'd maintain the lane use at the signal. South of Pleasant Street through to Ridgewood Road, we would have the modular curb barrier proposed. But there is a break at the barrier proposed at the Reed Street signal. So we're not proposing to restrict turns through there. And then moving south from Ridgewood Road, we have the two-way left turn lane. And you'll notice another section of red there. We are proposing a short stretch of modular curb median down the center for some center line hardening approaching the Hillside Street intersection along the horizontal curve. For the road diet pilot, right now, we're proposing the residential driveways along the blocks where the modular curb median is proposed will be restricted for left turns. And then the side streets and business driveways that are along these stretches that would be impacted would include Hallen Avenue, Highland Street, Carriage House School. All of the other side streets and businesses along the corridor, we are planning to maintain access for. All right, the next few slides are just going to walk through some schematic drawings of this cross section on Route 28. So this is starting at the north and then it works its way south. So starting at Reed's Dale Road, we are going to be revising the phasing, so the sequencing of the traffic signal on the Reed's Dale Road right turn lane. Right now, there's a time in the signal where that right turn lane goes with the left turn lane coming from Route 28. When we accommodate U-turn movements northbound off of Route 28, we can no longer allow that overlap. So for the safety of the U-turning movements, that would be changed. And then the U-turns would be accommodating the folks whose turning movements are proposed to be restricted. So you'll see along this drawing, different colored arrows. The red represents restricted movements and the green represents like an existing movement that would be maintained. And the blue is where we would anticipate, you know, additional volume being rerouted due to those turn restrictions. So here, you know, we're anticipating that folks who want to go southbound that are on the east side of the street would utilize that U-turn at the Reed's Dale Road signal to reverse their direction. Moving, yeah, moving south from there. At the, actually, do you mind going back? At the Milton DPW. That's okay. At the Milton DPW, we do start to open up that turn access. And that continues to Pleasant Street where we transition into a left turn lane. So we propose a southbound left turn lane onto Pleasant Street. And then south of Pleasant Street is where we start that modular curbing barrier. So you can see that down the center of the road there with the one travel lane in each direction.
So the business, can you go back to that side? So the business that is I think it's those first two, or they could both go right. Okay, I think that answers that because these two here, they're both commercial.
Okay.
I'm referring to the first two businesses, which are commercial. First two buildings are commercial.
Appreciate that, we'll make note of that.
Can you go back one more as well? So the U-turn proposed at Reed's Dale Road, how do we mitigate returning, making a U-turn with the oncoming right turn traffic?
So we'd.
Coming in from Reed's Dale. I think that's what she was saying is they'd have to cut that arrow short.
So is that going to be a change in the signals?
No. We are, we are mic'd up, Ms. Augustine. If you want to hear, you can come to the front.
It's okay.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, correct. We would be removing the portion of the signal phase that the right turn goes right now with that left so that that conflict does not exist.
Okay. Can I just follow up on this question? Because that blue arrow, that U-turn's diagram right there, which is now south of the crosswalk at Reed's Dale and 28. So that's a crosswalk from the dental office comes across to the accents. People would be able to make a U-turn coming north to make, to go back south there? How? Make, just make a U-turn on the intersection and head south? No.
Yeah, when the left turn movement goes, we would allow someone to be U-turning during that phase without conflict.
Okay, that, that, that causes me, I have some angst with that, but go ahead, I get it. I mean, just the pressure that that intersection takes daily as it is. Because the one thing, you know, everything you've talked about so far, I get it, you're trying to address speed and safety. But you and I both know we have a volume issue as well. And volume exacerbates just about everything when it comes to turns. And as you know, going back to your previous slide, it both Reed Street and the AM commute, so an AM flow, both Reed Street, which is signalized and Hallen Ave, which is not signalized, both have seven and IDNRs for left-hand or right-hand turn, either or. There's no, there's do not enters restricting on both of those, which it can be an issue in itself. It's another issue in itself that we're not even getting to, but just. I get it, I, I just. No one worries me, I'm just telling you.
Okay, we appreciate that comment.
Go ahead, sorry.
No, no problem. Yeah. So this is where the modular curving barrier begins. And that, yeah, you can go to the next one. And that general cross section continues until you get to Reed Street at Access Road, where we open up a left turn lane in each direction at the traffic signal. And we'd be proposing protected permitted left turn. So basically, there would be a portion for each direction of the turn where there's the green arrow and then the portion where there's the green ball at that intersection. And we are also assuming that folks will be utilizing the southbound left turn to U-turn because of the turn restrictions that the barrier is placing on folks to be able to turn left from those driveways to the north.
That's where, for example, if someone was coming out of Carriage Street, Carriage House. My kids went there for a couple of years. I would imagine that you, that's where they would come out and then they'd turn around. That's where they're south, is it?
That's for, it's not even in the picture.
That's the next slide, okay.
Yeah, but if you, any, any driveway along that.
Right, okay, got it.
Did you have conversation with them at all, the Carriage House? Did you have any, I think they regulate it anyway. I think they're one way in, one way out on their own. I think that's just how they do it.
Yeah.
They pick up and drop off.
One of their driveways is on the side streets, so it would only enter, it'd only impact the inn, yeah. Moving further south, this is just showing that, you know, that same general cross section of the modular barrier down the center. So this one's near Hallen Ave. And then this continues to just north of Ridgewood Road. So here is where you'll see the cross section start to differ, where we're opening up left turn lanes in each direction at the Ridgewood Road intersection. And then from here south, there's stretches that transition between two-way left turn lane and then left turn only lanes in some of the shorter blocks where we wanted to avoid very short stretches of two-way left turn lane. So left turn lane southbound at Nahotten, left turn lane into Heather Drive. So we are proposing, you know, left turn lanes into all of the side streets where we're not restricting turns.
It's, so from enforcement point of view, you're going solid yellow line on both sides, which is no turn with the exception of I see that the dotted line allowing those are the intersections where you could turn. This is more from a regulatory, you know, from enforcement point of view.
Exactly. This shows the design proposed at Hillside Street. So here we transition to some turn restriction, turn restriction, southbound, centerline hardening approaching Hillside Street. And then northbound, we provide a left turn only lane with some modular curbing next to it for additional centerline hardening to tighten up the turns through here and discourage any crossing over the double yellow centerline into the opposing direction. Moving south through here, so south of Hillside Street to north of Chickatack Road, you know, this area becomes much more dense with driveways on each side of the road. So we're proposing the two-way left turn lane through here so that we're maintaining access as much as possible for people. So you can see there's no turn restrictions through here. And then again, at the Eager Road intersection, we're transitioning into a left turn lane there. And this is just showing that cross section continuing through further south. Once we get to Chickatack Road, we are proposing dedicated left turn lanes in each direction with protected only, so the left turn arrow only left turns northbound and southbound at this location. And that takes us through the limits of the pilot design.
Yeah, why don't you finish up the slides and then we can, we can go through it.
So the, then these next few slides just walk through the anticipated timeline of the pilot and the pilot evaluation. So we're anticipating installation will be able to occur this fall. And we would maintain that pilot design throughout the winter. So we're not, you know, we're not going to put anything out there and then take it right away come winter season. With every change, you know, it's going to take some time for drivers to adjust to the area, adjust to the new design, learn new travel patterns and, you know, settle into the change essentially. So to allow time for that to occur before we start taking, you know, after measurements, we're anticipating that the evaluation could likely occur in the spring. And in order to evaluate the pilot, we'll be taking traffic counts both before the pilot is put in place and after the pilot is put in place in order to compare the impact. Some potential measurements of the pilot will include, you know, crash frequency and severity. So how is this impacting safety? You know, are the numbers moving in the right direction? Corridor vehicle travel speeds both during the peak times and outside of the peak times when you tend to see some of those higher speeds occurring. Corridor volumes on not only Route 28, but side streets and the adjacent routes that people might be likely to divert to because, you know, we are aware that, you know, traffic tends to flow like water and we don't want to just be pushing the problem to local streets that tend, you know, to be less able to handle those issues. And then corridor travel times. We are, you know, hoping to seek feedback during the pilot. And we're planning to develop, to post project information updates either on the town or Mast dot website to develop an online mapping tool for the public to, you know, learn about and engage with the project. And then we'll be doing, you know, supporting that with direct outreach to advertise the website and the feedback resources so that the word gets out. People know where to go to find information and to provide their comments and their thoughts. And then we would pair that with some targeted stakeholder outreach. So we'd want to meet with town officials, emergency response to get, you know, additional perspectives beyond the public's. So estimated next steps. As I mentioned, the implementation of the pilot in the fall. Collect data in the, you know, winter, early spring to evaluate, solicit feedback from, you know, the town and the public through online maps and meetings. And then, you know, we're also very aware that this project is, you know, butting right up against the roundabout construction, which is expected to begin next year. In the spring, you know, it'll be some limited, like utility, you know, short-term construction setups. And then really more of like that next summer is when some of the more significant roundabout construction is anticipated to begin. So we'll be sure to, you know, coordinate between the two projects to make sure that, you know, any adjustments that need to be made for the traveling public to transition between the two is made. Yeah, that's, that's our presentation.
Questions from the members?
I have a lot, but. I have.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. Daly.
A few questions, these are not in any particular order. You talked about tracking the impact. Can you share more about how you track these metrics and what you're looking for? Are you going to be doing this just from our reports on accidents? Will you? Can you hear me at all? I'll just go here, it's all right. Can you share how you will be tracking those metrics as, will you be on site and watching the flow of traffic? Are you waiting just on our police reports for accidents or any incidents that happen? Or are there things that you're doing internally? How will you know?
You know, we will not be on site, you know, perpetually, but we would definitely be doing site visits to observe how things are going firsthand. And then on the accidents tracking, typically, we, you know, do work with the crash reports that the police take and work with those statistics. And then when we did, we've done a different kind of quick build project on Route 114. And there was like a situation where we like needed that kind of monitoring. And if there's space, like you can kind of set up like cameras. And so we'll work with you and figure out like what level of monitoring is needed to understand what's going on. But there's a couple of options.
Are you monitoring speed as well for the average speed at different times?
Think our speed feedback signs that are out there.
I think you got them out there now, they're already out there.
Yeah, they capture speed, so we should have pretty like real-time, like constant speed data. And then that's something we would also take like at targeted locations in the town. Yeah, and we also use kind of probe data, which is available online from like Bluetooth technology that can be fairly accurate on a road like this.
Okay, during the pilot, do you normally make any changes if you're needed? Or is the pilot as done and then you judge at the end of the pilot?
It really depends if it seems like it's something that people just haven't settled into yet. Like there are some level of growing pains that we would need to kind of see out for a little bit and see if like, if the traffic. It's, it's just all about where people divert, right? So if we feel like it just needs to be there for a little bit longer, it would stay. If something came up that we weren't aware of, like a house, we thought was a house secretly a business and they have a truck and it can't make the turn, now it's going to, you know, something like that. Or some like really dangerous cut-through stuff is. Or some like really dangerous cut through stuff is happening. That's when I think we would make the adjustments like as quickly as we can. So sorry, that answer is terrible, but it makes a little bit.
Personally, I have some, I have some concerns on that U-turn at Reed's Dale. That does feel and seem very dangerous to me, that U-turn. For the two-way turn lanes, was there any thought on adding traffic signals so that those turns could be a little easier? Because now I'm thinking of people being stuck in that middle lane, waiting for the flow of traffic to pass.
Yeah, that. That wasn't something we were considering as part of the pilot scope. Did you have a specific location you were thinking?
No, I just, I was just thinking when I saw the third slide, it was kind of a long stretch of that two-way, that two-way turn lane. And I said that, you know, thinking of, I know the traffic will be a little slower because of us going down the two lanes. But I'm just imagining that people may be stuck in that left turn lane now, waiting for the person that lets them in as they're trying to make that turn without a stop, without a stoplight that stops the traffic.
Yeah, there, yeah, we do anticipate there will be delayed turning, you know, against a pretty heavy flow of traffic. Right now, we are not considering adding any signals through there. Most of those volumes and most of the driveways and side streets through there are relatively low volume. In order to consider adding a traffic signal, we would have to meet these volume thresholds called signal warrants. And you, when, essentially when you don't meet those, you can actually be introducing safety concerns if a signal is not, you know, considered necessary. So that's something that would have to be considered, you know, if any new signals were to be looked at along the corridor. But it's not something we were including within the pilot.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and the conflicts are reduced for those turning movements. So not only do you have a lane to turn into, but because you're now only turning across one lane, there's also a lot less turning conflicts for folks. So while gaps might be, you know, difficult, you're only turning across one lane of traffic. So it does eliminate what we call courtesy crashes that you see pretty commonly along these roads where like one vehicle sees you going to turn, so they stop. And then the person in the adjacent lane doesn't see you, doesn't notice and goes, and then the crash occurs. So this does help mitigate those situations.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a few. So do you have a preference on which one of these alternatives you like?
Yeah, our current preferred, I can't tell if this is working, is the hybrid alternative. That's the one that we intend to run with that we showed to the working group last week and seemed to have some internal consensus around.
Okay.
Which is the one that does a little bit of both.
With a barrier, so.
Yeah.
So to that point then, let's talk about winter. So you know, it's a Mast dot road, so you had road crews to cover that section. So Milton is very unique in that it can produce its own weather. What I mean by that is Great Blue Hill is one of the highest elevations in the metro Boston area, natural elevations. It could be pouring rain on 93 and it can be a blizzard on 138 and 28. One of the, one of the difficulties of that 28 corridor is it's in between, and I only go in there because I'm. Listen, my dad was, my dad was chief 20 years ago, he was a huge weather buff. He studied weather his whole life. And you're between two hills, you're between Great Big Blue Hill and Chickatahbit Hill, and it makes its own. And if you were to have some of the old veteran DPW workers that work, because the DPW outers, you know, is right there. That section for your crews has been really, I can't tell how many times it's gone gridlocked ice. So will the, will those hybrid, because I know they're barrier, will they be able to sustain really harsh winters? Like, will they be able to sustain it? Because tomorrow's fine, you know, it's August, but we're talking December, January, I mean, that takes. I mean, I think if you look and see the amount of salt that Mast dot has to deploy in an average year, just in that section, I think you're going to be shocked.
Yeah.
Totally definitely granite out.
We have used materials like this that have stayed up through the winter. I mean, it definitely is maintenance, like these are pilots for a reason. And we've been working with the district to maintain the road hand in hand to make sure that they kind of agree to the, the maintenance burden that this will cause, don't get me wrong. But because they're kind of situated in the middle of the barrier and they're offset from the road, like we don't expect them to like get hit as often like this. There, it's not like when they're right up along the side of a road, like protecting a bike lane. Plows often hit those because it's right where they're going. With this being right in the middle and buffered a little bit from the traveling, it will be.
More of a less, less of a target.
Yeah, less than, than some other flex posts locations. But yeah, it'll definitely be a little bit of a maintenance lift. And, and we're kind of willing to do that because this is a safety first kind of project.
Okay. And just my, my last, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I was just going to add, you know, like one of the reasons that we moved towards like the more modular as opposed to steel, which obviously would be, you know, hardier. Was when we started looking at that access and we wanted something that emergency vehicles would be able to mount if needed. Because the corridor, while it's, you know, a wide roadway, you know, for turning movements, it's actually not that wide for large vehicles. So since the shoulders today are so narrow. So, you know, the widened shoulders should help provide more enforcement opportunities. And then these modular curvings being, you know, something that an emergency vehicle could drive over also means that we're not significantly impacting, you know, their ability to respond to an emergency at one of the locations that we're restricting turns, which was important to us.
And then this, my final two points, one's a request. The first one is, I like, use the word likely, cut through traffic. You use a good definition though. If you pour through water, it'll find the, I used to use Swiss cheese, it'll find the. This is more for people at home who are watching that while this will make this car safer, the volume's not going away. We're still going to deal with the same amount of volume and people don't want to sit in traffic. They find alternative ways. So that is something particularly, I, I, my two greatest concerns are Highland Street and Hillside Street. Because they're going to catch the bulk of it. They just, and I think from the town's point of view, we're going to have to look at that as well.
Sorry, what was the second street?
Highland and Hillside.
Hillside, yeah.
They catch the most on that north of the country. And then finally, could you make sure you send this to my state house office, to my, and to Senator Driscoll as well? Just so that we can have a copy of this to see it. Good. We're taking a lot of calls and that's a lot of calls. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time on this. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm done.
So I just have a couple of quick questions. In terms of fall installation, so fall runs from, you know, September 21st to December 21st. Do we have a, is there a more precise? If we're, if we're using, you know, specific, and I, I don't know how specific you want to get, but that's the question that brings it from the back.
Yeah, we're going to call in our district representative, Mark here, to explain the complexities.
Sure.
Yeah. As you probably know, the fall is one of the busiest time for our maintenance work. Because it leads into the winter when we have to stop all works. So one of the issues is we have to coordinate probably four of our maintenance contractors for this project. And also we have to order the modular curbing that, as I was talking about. So what we're hoping is probably towards the end of September, beginning of October to start. But that's contingent upon when we can get the modular curbing in the, ordered and supplied to us by our contractor. And then once we get, we have the final plans and everything, we'll bring in our contractors and work out a schedule with them. We'll also, we'll give them a heads up that this is coming. They'll know it's coming. But we will have to pin down dates. And once we do that, we'll give the schedule back to you to inform Milton what we're planning on implementing the changes.
And, and how much lead time do you usually get? Like we've got, figured out everybody's available for October 1st, you know, so you might find that out.
The middle of the month.
Middle of September.
Yeah, we're supposed to be getting the final plans from HSH. So we'll be doing a lot of the coordinating around then because we'll know definitively what we're doing out there, what we need to order and get everybody's schedule lined up. We do have some pull with the contractors because this is a very important project for us. So we'll, you know, kind of push some stuff to the wayside on our maintenance work and make this a priority.
Appreciate that.
Yep.
The fa- second question sort of related to the timing. You know, I, I, I'm glad that we're going to have, you know, websites and, you know, hopefully media on this. One thing that I've seen, you know, just driving around, not, not any traffic expertise, but you have those portable signs that say, you know, this road will be reduced to one lane. Is that something that we would?
We will be doing that. We'll be putting out several of our VMS trailers on the corridor, both north and southbound. Advertising in preparation, the work's going to be ongoing at a certain date and then while the work's going on as well.
Okay, great. And then, so this is alluding to sort of, to Mr. Wells' question earlier. So obviously this is pilot, so we'll come back and reevaluate this mid-spring of, of 26 maybe. Would you, would there be then a suggestion potentially, let's say it goes swimmingly? Would we want to think about replacing the, the more temporary curb structures with a steel structure? Or would we, we, you kind of imagine keeping, keeping these, the posts, I don't know what they're called. The plastic posts.
The flex posts.
Flex posts.
Yep. I don't think we've discussed that yet, so.
Okay.
What the next steps would be beyond evaluating the project at this time. So, I mean, that could be an alternative with a hardier steel barrier or something like that. But that also has some issues with the, we have to put attenuators at each end to make sure that there's no blunt ends for oncoming traffic and things like that. And if we do go with a metal barrier, it goes back to what Liza was saying about the access for emergency vehicles. So, I mean, that's a, a very critical thing, especially for police and fire.
So in some of the other roads where you've put the flex posts and you kind of see them as a more or less full, like, you know, permanent structure-ish?
Yeah, we have done that, not on highways, but on arterials. The only highway we have it up on the, I mean, up on the Zaking Bridge before with the HOV lanes and we replaced those. We have them across the Mass Ave Bridge for delineating the bike lanes and things like that. So we do have to replace them. They do get knocked out, they get lost, things like that. But they don't, more, more, more of them stay in place than not, so.
And then my final question is more of a suggestion really. So I appreciate that you're going to be looking at the, sort of the offshoots of the traffic that will be happening elsewhere. And you mentioned 138, which I think is a natural place that people might try. Canton Ave also comes to mind because if you come off of 138, or if you, if you come off of the highway, you can turn onto Canton Ave pretty quick off of 138. And if folks are trying to cut through, they may use that as well. So I would just suggest, you know, knowing Canton Ave has Town Hall, has our high school on it, has, you know, a significant amount of traffic already, Milton Academy's, well, that's technically Center Street there. But I would, I would suggest maybe looking at that as well as one of the places that could potentially see a lot of the overflow. Great. So Mr. Milano, yes?
I was curious in terms of, so what is the congestion impact? Do you, have you kind of looked at that? I'm just curious. Do you expect all the intersections to be kind of at a failure level? Is that different from where they're at today? Do you expect it to be kind of bottlenecked up at Chickatahbit? Not as bad on the rest of the corridor if you looked at that closely?
You realize all eyes are on you? Did you, did you feel it? I could see it. All eyes are on you.
Fun questions. Yes, we've looked at it. We've looked at it, however, with, you know, the skepticism of we're anticipating the roadway to be over capacity. Once you get over capacity in a traffic model, they tend to get less accurate. So yes, we are anticipating significant queuing at all of the signals. Even just looking at an isolated segment. The demand today exceeds what you would accommodate in a single travel lane of each direction. So yeah, we are expecting significant impacts of traffic operations. You know, if people do not divert. I think, you know, once it becomes a less attractive cut through, probably it's going to hit capacity and people will start seeking alternate routes. So, you know, we expect it to be at capacity or over capacity, depending on how people stick to the route or divert to other options.
Thank you. And I'm just, in terms of, is, is there a decision that you're looking for the select board to make? Or is Mast dot moving ahead with this, it's being implemented? Or is there a, a request of the board to approve it? Or I just am wondering who's ball, the court is in for the kind of final go, no-go?
It's their role.
So essentially, we're looking to get kind of some concurrence that this is okay. We don't want to do something that is going to cause you more issues. But we also heard overwhelmingly that there's a desire to do something on the court. And, and so where it's a pilot and, and even as we were talking about the curbing, it's a, it's a modular curbing. It's made out of recycled tires. It's very heavy. You bolt it down, it could come up easily. So if we had to pull stuff, we can make changes. Obviously, we can't make striping changes in the middle of the winter. But in any, any road diet that we've done, whether it's the Hingham Pilot or the one in Reading and stuff like that, it, it's, it takes a while for the dust to settle before people get used to it. And then it, it seems to work, you know, and it's a change. People don't like change. Obviously, the demand, 28 is being fed from one lane, so it's the demand coming off of 93. You know, that's the people that we're hoping to discourage, you know, from, from continuing to travel in this quarter. I mean, I don't know how you operate if you need to have us an official vote, you know, but this is what we would like to do. We need to get quantities to order them so we can get something in the ground this, this fall.
I, I mean, I think, I, I think it's a great question, Mr. Milano. My suggestion would be that the board maybe does just have a quick vote to agree on whether or not, you know, to endorse the exploration of this pilot. Or we could just sort of say, if we all agree, that, that we all agree that this is something we should try to do. And then we'll just stay posted on, on things as they develop. Mr. Wells?
I'll take option two, only in given the conflict I have in two, which I support this in my state house, but I want to be able to do that because that, that's where I'm getting more of it. The most of it is there. So if, if you want to come up, I'm with you. And I don't want to leave it just to two of you to vote because then.
Well, we can't, yeah. But I think we can just, we can just sort of agree that.
I agree. I agree.
Is that?
I'm in agreement there. My only concern is, so what are our options in this time in the beginning for this oversaturation of traffic? Like, are we putting police details out there? Because I'm thinking of all the streets that are going to be backed up in this first probably three to five weeks of the changes. Are we putting up signage? Are we sending out alerts? Like what, what are the options for us in the town and what can the residents expect during this time? Yeah, so obviously we'll be, we'll be putting up message boards well in advance that there'll be new traffic patterns and new conversion to, from two lanes to one lane. We'll do a, a public outreach campaign. So this will be something that we have to do a public outreach plan, which has to go to the governor's office. And then our legislative affairs and our communications people get it out to media even. So this would be something that we would want the general public to learn about, to be prepared and make their decisions about thinking about another route. You know, those people that, that don't have to come through this quarter, that have an option. How long is it before that, that filters through Waze and it tells people, don't go through this quarter? Well, I mean, we, we have an, we have the ability to talk to Waze and Google and we can tell them that the lanes, it's not a restriction. So we'll just tell them that it's going from two lanes to one lane each direction and give them that information.
Thank you.
Yeah. Unless we're closing the road, they won't publish anything on the site. Their algorithms will learn quickly.
I just want a final question. So have you tried to model this out? Projecting on a little bit like when the rotor ran up a roundabout, I just came back from an official mission to Iowa Northern. And I, I think I counted, we went through 98 roundabouts and now a three-day trip, 35, 33 legislators. But have you modeled this out or want to see what it might look like when the roundabout is completed? With how the roundabout, do you, do you, do you think the roundabout has an impact on the flow at all? Either more, either north or south? Because it's going to, the, the, the construction is going to exacerbate it a little bit anyway. It's just going to, because it's just gonna, like you say, police, it's going to be a mess there for the period of the construction. Have you thought about this, how it will look when it's done? I know how the intersection is going to look. Have you thought about how this helps feed or maybe alleviate some of this? I know it can't make volume go away, but. And I don't even know if you can answer that. I mean.
Yeah, no, that's a really interesting question. We haven't.
Some of them are impossible to answer.
We haven't explicitly modeled that situation. But thinking through some of the ramifications. But thinking through some of the ramifications, I mean, theoretically, southbound now, you will have less traffic feeding into the roundabout on Randolph because we've reduced the capacity of the road leading up to it. From the south, it's already one lane today. So I don't anticipate this significantly changing things approaching the roundabout from the south. But the key will be, how does the roundabout design transition into the road diet? So that we're not backing traffic up through the roundabout? Because then it impacts the functionality of the roundabout, which we would not want to do. So I think that would be the key to marrying these two together.
I know that was something that, and, and, and when you guys were here, I think it was last year, one of the questions that I had too was, once the roundabout is in place and you lose that signal and you sort of lose that sort of natural break in traffic that happens with a signal, then how will that, that's something else that I'm, I would just be curious to hear as you, as we continue this, to think about the impact of not having that signal on, on left turns and, and, you know, particularly right north of where the roundabout would be.
Yeah, I think, you know, the impact to left turns is twofold, right? Because you're now only turning against one lane of traffic. So you have less conflicts, it's an easier movement. But there's more traffic in one lane opposing you. So gaps are still going to be difficult to turn. So that's kind of the impact. The roundabout, you know, is a fantastic traffic calming measure. So, you know, signals have been brought up a lot. I know from the public and from folks that, you know, to control the speed along the corridor, stop people with signals. The roundabout does that naturally, so we don't have to stop people. The geometry of the roundabout slows you without you having to sit at a red light that, you know, maybe in the middle of the night, someone blows through and it's a safety problem. So the roundabout's providing that level of traffic calming without stopping people. Now, that's not going to last through the two-mile corridor here that we're talking about. But in the vicinity of the intersection, it will be effective in slowing people down. It's designed to be.
Okay. The only other thing that I'd add is where we've, we, we have a number of, obviously, roundabouts in Massachusetts. And one of the things is, even if there are driveways close by, whether it's a commercial driveway, a residential driveway, because of the slower speeds and the way they operate, people are actually more accommodating with letting someone out and in. Because you're already at a, at a slower speed. And it's not like one car is going to make it that much of a difference, you know? Versus when you got a green light, people are like, no, this is my time, I'm going. So I think is generally from all the experience that we've had with them, I can't say that all your residents will be compassionate, but that's, the, the theory is that they're, they're just more willing to, to let that person out.
Okay.
And that's from experience all across the state where we have these. And some are multi-lanes.
It makes sense at a base level. So I think unless we have any more questions, you have the select board's agreement that this is something that we want to, you know, see happen. And we look forward to you keeping us posted on the timing. And I'm sure that we'll get some regular updates on, on that as well. And we'll leave it to Mr. Milano, maybe to schedule an update at some point after the installation. But even hearing before the installation, what the timing is going to be would be fantastic.
Yeah, we'll, through Dan Fielding, we'll absolutely keep you up to date. Now that we have direction, we start putting the numbers together, we'll get things ordered. And then, like I said, the district is poised to jump on this, so.
And we appreciate that. And I, you know, I think it was helpful to sort of remind everyone that we've been talking about Chickahaw since twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. So, you know, the fact that we're, we've been able to turn this around, you know, in a very short period of time, as far as government work is considered, you know, we're greatly appreciative of that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Yes. Just going to take a quick two-minute break.
To no worries.
Are positions that require you to to address a whole host of different issues and and really get very deep into town business. And so if that's not what you're interested in doing, please, you know, take, take these elections very seriously because that, you know, this, this is a real cost to us as a town to hold this election. Mr. Wells.
I just want to say that I don't. I can't think of a time when this happened in the past, but I, I don't know Mr. Gohan very well, but I, I do feel that this was not a decision that he made lightly. I think he felt he had to make this decision and I come from a world where I often speak of it. What we see is not often what things really, what the reality of an individual's life is. And for whatever reason, he felt he had to make that decision. And while yes, it's going to cost us some money to do it. I don't think we have any choice because I think we'll be 20 seconds by eight thirty tomorrow morning if we don't vote to do it.
Right.
It, it is the price of doing business and I wish him the best and I wish him well. And I thank him for the time that he was here because he did roll up his sleeves and try hard. And, and I say this to the two of you like you're brand new and you're already getting here with major decisions that are really, really tough and sometimes some people just can't handle it. So I wish him well. I'm sad it happened, but we got to move forward. We got to do it.
I agree. So in that spirit, we have a motion, a second. If no one else has anything to say, we can just do a standard vote on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, unanimous?
Thank you. Combination papers will be available tomorrow. So any candidates that are interested in running, we hope to see you.
And they'll do, be due back on?
September sixteenth, so just shy of three weeks.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. We have the application of Verizon Wireless New England for small wireless facilities installation on Thatcher Street Pole. This is a public hearing process. So I am going to open the public hearing by reading the hearing notice into the record. Which one's the hearing notice? This whole thing?
Yeah.
Nope.
No.
I have it right here. Sorry. One moment. I can read it before the board. Okay, that would be great. Mr. Milano is going to read the hearing notice into the record and, and state that the butters were also mailed the meeting notice.
So the select board will conduct a public hearing at seven oh five P M. Now eight twenty-three P M. On Tuesday, August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five pursuant to the town's small cell equipment policy on an application by Centerline Communications, L S C, on behalf of Verizon Wireless to install a small cell wireless facility at one hundred and fifty Thatcher Street on existing pole utility pole eighteen plans for the proposed facility are available for public inspection. The select board office located in the town office building five twenty-five Canton Ave from eight thirty A M. To four thirty P M. Monday to Thursday and on the town website. The hearing will be conducted in person momentarily at the Milton Council on Aging ten Walnut Street and include remote access in accordance with Master Law's chapter thirty-one A as amended. The notice also gave instructions on how to access by Zoom and the, this notice, this exact notice was mailed to a butters within three hundred feet of utility pole eighteen on Thatcher Street.
Okay. So it becomes my duty now to request, request the applicant, present the petition, an application and provide any pertinent background information. So please, sir, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. Sean Conway, I'm here with Verizon Wireless. I have with me also Christopher Tracy, who's with Centerline Communications, a site acquisition engineer. And also on the Zoom call, I have an R F engineer from our R F team, Brian Williams, who can answer any questions about R F. This is, this application Verizon is proposing to install a small wireless facility, as said, at one, about approximately one fifty Thatcher Avenue, Thatcher Street and at the intersection of Houston Avenue. The seller will cover that area. It's an area of congestion that the R F and system performance team came to us and said they needed some new network. So at that point, we go out and we look at the local ordinance, follow the guidelines of the ordinance, work with the local utilities to submit an application for a utility pole that will allow the, allow our attachment of the small wireless facility. Through our surveys, this, this pole turned out to be the best location for us to install a small wireless facility. So this location, we're putting a antenna. It's very similar to a transformer, electric transformer that you'd see on a utility pole. That'll be located at the top of the utility pole at thirty-four feet. Lower on the pole, actually, the antenna itself would be about fourteen inches in diameter and no larger than thirty-five inches tall. The, the equipment from there will go lower on the radio, lower on the pole, there'll be a bracket with four radio radios in it. It's about twelve feet high in the utility pole. From there, it will go down to a electric diplexer and then a meter which will power the site. And there'll also be cables running from our radios up to the antenna that will be in a U guard covered. They won't be exposed on the pole. Let's see. So the, the facility will, will not have any backup batteries or any generators or any lights. And it will operate well within the guidelines set forth the FCC on R F safety. I do have Brian on the Zoom. If we could let him in, he will show us the, the existing coverage in the area and why we decided we needed a location here at Thatcher Avenue.
He's joining now.
Thanks.
He disappeared.
Oh, there he is.
Brian, can you hear us okay? I think you're on mute.
I think he's going to promote him.
He's promoted.
Okay. Can you hear me now? Yes?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Basically, are you okay with my accent? Because I have a kind of a strange accent and also I've had a cold, so.
Just as long as he tells what it is so we can enjoy it.
Is he Scottish?
Okay, it's Scottish.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, so basically, as I'll try to share a presentation with you. It's just, it's a basic presentation. They say it shows the coverage that the site would get. So if you can, me, you can see the presentation.
Yes, it came up for us. We can see it. Yep.
So basically, this is just the yellow areas would be coverage where we would, a reasonable expectation that we would get indoor coverage. So you know, that, that is the kind of guidelines that we use. That you should be able to make a phone call inside your.
We lost. We may have lost your audio.
I think he was just pointing out the area.
Your house. Second one is. What expect, so we would, we would expect to fill in that gap in that area with regards to coverage. The other thing, is everyone okay with that?
You, could you just flip back and forth? We lost your audio a little bit, but I think we, we got.
Okay, sorry, sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry. The first one, coverage as it's right now. Yeah. So yellow area is a signal level where you would reasonably expect to make indoor calls. Yeah?
Got it.
So. Yeah, so that, that's basically it. So the second one is when we decide what the expectations would be, the, the coverage gained, you know? So basically, it fills in that gap between those two, that, that area, you know, the, the site is, is very, is, is actually excellently located in the center of where, where the surrounding sites are. And I can, I can sort of explain to you why, why that's got a certain benefit. What I believe system performers were saying is the site is going into congestion. So they say this area, a lot of the problems are actually congestion. And so as you see this, this move area you see here.
Yes.
It's actually like what, is actually what, what you would call the serving area or the equal per boundary area. All these things are, all these plots are done in scale. So you know, this is the area where we would expect that the difference in the coverage is on this side, the surrounding sites just have high band LTE. Basically means that it's for capacity, but not, not fantastic for coverage. As you go in more, the, more in the frequency band, you increase your coverage. So basically, the difference between this site and the surrounding site that we've added low band, make the coverage more robust or cover a bigger area. Is there, is there any questions or anything I can clarify?
Aren't there others of these in town?
There are, yes.
Okay. So one quick question, because, because one resident did. This is more going to your house.
Yeah.
So for as long as I can remember, when you leave here and go right on Canton Avenue towards upper Canton Avenue, both the side of the high school and what is called Indian Cliff Estates and down into that hole, cellphone coverage is almost non-existent. And I thought years ago, going back to when I was police chief, before I was even here, you were going to add a couple of these in that area.
We did.
You did.
We added two right outside of the Indian Cliff area. I mean, they're, they're mainly, as Brian was talking here, they're, they're taking a lot of capacity. So they're not able to, to, to do as much coverage because it's, it's a lot of congestion that's in the area. Again, these are small cells. It's not like one of our big towers that can cover a big giant area. So if they get into an area where there's trees and a lot of other use on the network, then they, the, the spread of the signal would degrade.
I get it. Okay. I knew that. I'm like, when I got that, I'm like, I remember years ago.
Yep.
Because that's still what I call a hole today. It's a huge hole.
The two cells are up and active. You know, we looked at them and they're just, they're more capacity fixes right now.
What is the, what is the formal process for feedback on something like that? Like, you know, in this situation, you put a new small cell in. If coverage doesn't improve, like what is, you know, and if residents have a challenge, do they just call Verizon? Do they work with us to work with?
It can be a mix, a mix of all of, all this. I mean, we are always monitoring our network. It's very important for our customers to have good service.
Yeah.
But yes, I mean, if, if there's locations out there that the town or the city is willing to look, to give us somewhere to put a tower up.
Right, because.
It's going to make things a lot better for us. These small cells are small fixes. They can do, you know, as you guys can see, a small area. Would like to come into towns like Milton and build a tower somewhere that's going to cover a big giant area. But yeah, there's the avenue of going to Verizon directly. We listen. If, if there's a lot of complaints coming in in a certain area, it gets bubbled up. Again, we certainly, we'll see the problem areas. We probably know of them. There may be a reason that we, we're not able to fix it. It could be, we've had permitting issues in the past or something has come up in the area that's just not possible to do. But if you guys have areas that we could work with to look at for macro towers, that would be fantastic.
Are those the only two solutions, either the small cells or the large towers?
I mean, we do, we do rooftops. You know, you can, you can do, you can do antennas on rooftops, water tanks. There's, there's multiple solutions out there.
And I'll just add that Sean and I spoke this afternoon. We talked about potential locations. I'm going to get them listed facilities that Verizon can take a look at. If it goes somewhere, great. If it doesn't, we can keep plugging away. And I, I direct, I mentioned both the Indian Cliffs issue that we were apprised of. And Cape and Street, I've, I've received complaints about. So I, I shared those with Sean earlier today as well.
Like I said to Nick, we'll, we'll take those coordinates. We'll put them right into the system. If there's something that hits the R F team, the system performance team, they'll be thrilled to come and talk to you guys. You know, I'll, I'll come and talk to you guys. They'll, they'll, they'll send me, send me in. We'd be happy to, to build something in Milton.
I remember when, when Bill Clark was planning, he tried very hard to put wood on equity on D C. It's like a tree, one of the, you know, the fake pine, they're actually fake trees, but they're actually a tower. They're all along the Mass Pike. Oh, they're all on the Mass Pike, but D C I was just dead against it. They wouldn't do it, but it would. It's really, still today, it's a public safety issue because of just how much you've got that, that's the high school, you've got, you've got pine tree and potentially another school. You and Rick, that's one of the most dense areas of town and it's, it literally is, as you know, it's a hole.
Right. Yep. Yeah, I mean, if, if, if we're looking there, there's probably other players that are looking there too. So it's, it would be ideal.
Okay.
Great. Any other questions from the select board?
No.
Is there anything else that you wish to present?
No, I mean, you brought up the last thing I was going to say was that, yeah, you know, we're always monitoring the network and if you guys want to collaborate or have your residents call, please do so.
Okay, so this is a public hearing. We don't have any members of the public in the room. I see there's a few people on Zoom, so I'll give them a chance to put their hand up if they want to ask a question. They have the ability to do that during public hearing process. We do have one hand up.
Hi. I have many friends who live at Home Inc. off Blue Hill Parkway. And a lot of them just have cell phones now and their calls, that's a senior housing, their calls are always dropping when I speak to them. And they've been told that it's because they need an antenna somewhere up there. It's at the end of Blue Hill Parkway, Blue Hills Parkway and Canton Ave and where Canton Ave intersection. So I think that would, it would be great if that could be looked at.
Thank you, Ms. Felton. Yeah, that, that's the exact hole we were talking about there too. It's Home Inc. is another, another factor there. All right. So it would be great to follow up on the, on the antenna thing. And then, so if we don't have any more questions from the public or the board.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
We have a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Daly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we can have a discussion now. I, I would take a motion on this.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the application to install one small cell wireless facility on the existing pole number eighteen located approximately one five zero Thatcher Street in Milton.
Motion made by Mr. Wells.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Haggerty. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Welcome back in the dock tonight, though.
Great. All right. Moving ahead, we have Town Council Services. We did have an interview yesterday with Murphy Hessie Tumi and Lehane. So now we've had four interviews total. Mr. Milano, I might turn this over to you because I know you've been aggregating some of the feedback from the board members. And so I don't know if you want to share any sort of initial impressions from that feedback. I know that I gave you mine.
Yes, and the feedback that I received was prior to the M H T L interview yesterday. I'll just note of Mr. Wells, I, I did not hear from him and he had been traveling, but when received, the three members who did respond had me Talman ranked first. All three of them did. All three of you, rather, not them. And I bet I just would note that that was prior to the M H T L interview that took place last night. If that helps to get the conversation started or hurts, I'm not sure, but that is the feedback that was provided to me prior to the interview last night.
Okay. So comments from the members. Obviously, this is a, a big decision.
So I had a different one. But again, I first, and I want to give deference to the two of you first because this is a really tough decision for two people to have to vote on that have been here literally for fifteen minutes as not in an entity that has been framed into this community for forty years. They were not my pick. But I did listen intently to Murphy Hessie last night and I think that I was very impressed with proposed lead counsel. I do know attorney North, Carol North, very well. We've worked on numerous cases together, both internally, airplane noise, issues on the town. And I have a high degree of confidence in her. I did talk to today, though, I heard from a former colleague, a lawyer, because one thing I am not is a lawyer. I may have testified in a lot of courts, but I'm not an attorney and she's been following this intently and really spoke at length to me about why we should retain Murphy Hessie Tumi right here. And I trust her judgment emphatically. And so I did tell Mr. Milano today that I wanted to talk to two of the more senior committee chairs that deal with them more than us. And one of them is John Cannon, who's a brilliant attorney in his own right and who's been chair of the Conservation Commission. And as you heard and you guys will learn, land use, two of our biggest cases right now are Lower Guile and six forty-two, six forty-eight, six fifty-two Canton Avenue. So I really, and John was pretty emphatic with me today that, and I believe he said he echoed this to you, that he's extremely happy with Murphy Hessie Tumi Lehane and he is extremely happy with the change of who lead counsel would be. And I, in my heart and I, Katie Conlon, who I'm going to name now, who I have, from the legal aspect of this job, I don't know any member of this board that I've ever worked with, perhaps other than Mrs. McGetrick, who so focused, so diligently on the legal aspects and the relationship between Town Council and us. And she was absolutely impressed. I actually text her last night to ask you, you watching this? She says, I am. And then she sent me some comments today on the things that she thought about. And one of the things that attorney Hessie talked about that I didn't really think about is institutional knowledge. And the second thing, which was me Talon Helm is not my pick. Because the two biggest things that both attorney Cannon and Katie talked to me about and one other attorney from another town is depth, bench depth. And I didn't think they had that. The only one that I thought closest to, and Catherine O'Donoghue, the third one I talked to, which was this morning, and she's in Nova Scotia, and I feel bad for bothering her on her vacation, is you want to have bench depth. And for most of, almost all of my career, both as an apartment head and now nine years here, up until recently, Murphy Hessie already's always had that. So my thought is, and you may not agree with me, before we turn this barrel in forty years of commitment and partnership with this town, because they really are your partner in so many ways, perhaps we allow the swap of lead counsel and extend this for a year. Now, we don't have to vote tonight and I, I even said to you today, I, I told you this today, like I'm, this is such a big decision. I'm even want to let everyone sit and think about what I'm saying here. Because I didn't expect to have to think about it in this way as much as I have now that I've talked to all three of them and thought about this. And really, I was as impressed with, and I wasn't even in the room. You guys were in the room. I wasn't. And particularly with attorney
Conley.
Conley. Attorney Cannon was extremely impressed with her and has been. And so just given all the things that we have going, my thought is that I'd like to give them the opportunity to extend them for a year and see how this goes. And if, and then for you guys, because as I said, well, I don't think you were on the day when we did the last interviews and I said it to you, Mr. Daly and you, Mr. Zull, you're going to make a decision that is going to go beyond all of us in this room. And I, I had fully expected that we might be making that decision. And then the more that I thought about it, I thought about all the different cases and all the different things that have gone on. I thought to myself, this may not be the right move to make. And I know I'm the lone voice here, but I, it would be. And in my forty-first year serving this town, you already know this, I say it, still can't believe it. I'm now your senior, my father, he did forty-three years. I'm like, I would have gone longer for you. I think, given, and I think the battles and the history that we've had with Murphy Hessie and the depth that they have for a bench, that perhaps we think about this for tonight and think about extending them for a year. But that's just my two cents on this.
Okay. Turn to the other members for their thoughts.
Everyone's looking at me.
Well, I just turned in this general direction that Winston was looking.
It's all the way to look now except that way.
That's just the way it is.
Yeah, getting, getting used to this dynamic. So I I've been here since May.
Same.
And followed, yeah, and have been following the events of the town for the past couple of years. So I, I am of the opinion that it is perhaps time for change. I think that M H T L, while they're lovely, lovely people, I, I think there are, there's a lot of room for improvement in the legal services that, that the town receives. And as somebody who receives legal services in my day-to-day job, you know, I, I think I know some things to look for. My top two were M T C and K P Law. I really, really liked what M T C brought to the table in terms of their municipal experience and expertise and how I got really the sense from them that they were not just thinking about things in legal terms, but also thinking about things in operational terms, which is, I mean, that's probably my bias. But I think that that's so crucial when, when dealing with things in a government context is that you need to be able to see the successive implications of, of whatever you're dealing with. K P Law, I think, kind of has that, that depth. And I was particularly impressed with them. And just like their general approach. So that, that is, that is where my, my thinking is. I, you know, when I think of Murphy Hessie, I, I guess my question is, it seems like these challenges have been here for a little bit. And the fact that we were going out to bid for another firm. And, you know, they tried to make some changes at the last minute to get back in and talk to us. You know, I'm, I'm just wondering, like, why, like, why they, why, why they would make their change in their lead counsel, sort of like after the fact. I think for me, that, that's kind of the, the question. You know, why, why did the firm care to make that shift at this point and not sooner?
Mr. Daly, do you want to share your thoughts?
Yes, so I'm very, very respectful and thankful for the service of M H T L over the last forty years. And I thought this would be kind of the conflict of having them back in the running, them not being there from the beginning is that they've done a lot of great things for the town and been a part of a lot of really big decisions for the town over four decades. But my understanding is that this process has had a lot of stops and starts for the last ten to fifteen years. We've been thinking about looking for a new town, new town council, new labor council, and now the process has started. And so you know, me Talman was also my number one. I like what they presented to us in terms of who would be our lead attorney. They seemed very ready to jump in and be fully embedded. I did not have any questions in their ability to really pick up the ball and keep it going. And I had the same reservations that Member Hegarty had about why did the M H T L changes come now? If questions had been asked over the last few years, if issues had been raised, why weren't those things addressed? Why weren't the, why wasn't that deep bench employed in times when we needed them in the last few years? Because it seems that it was not. And it's not to, and it's to say, when you, when you work with someone for forty years, you know, they, they have more opportunities to make mistakes, right? And so when the shiny new thing always is the shiny new thing. I'm not against taking some more time if we feel that this is a big decision, if we want to talk to a few more people in town, if we want to talk to a few more of the department heads to, to get their feeling based on the history. But I'm still a little bit in the camp of right now of it felt a little bit too late, although I will say. Felt a little bit too late, although I will say Murphy Hesse was incredibly impressive in the interview yesterday. I thought they were great. I thought all three, all three of them were fantastic and them being Milton residents also is to me a bonus as well. But I don't think if I just went off that, if I just went off the interviews and what was presented by each of the firms. For me, they would not have jumped Me Talon. But again, I'm not against if we say this is a little too much and for right now to make the decision, because the first time we've had the chance to have the conversation.
Yes.
And, you know, maybe one conversation is not enough to make this, this big of a decision.
Usually these decisions are not made in one conversation.
I agree with that.
And so it's good for us to get this all out.
Yeah.
That's kind of where, right.
Well, I would say, I mean, I think Mr. Milano kind of gave it away, he said, I mean, MTC was the top pick for all of us. For me, it was a narrow.
It wasn't for me, it was not mine.
For the, for the written comments that he had received. For me, it was narrow between MTC and KP. I, I felt, as Ms. Hegarty said. You, you can't really deny that KP has the biggest bench, but I, I do worry that in, in a firm that's that big. With that many lawyers that you get a little lost in the shuffle sometime and I, I, I felt like. MTC kind of had that mixture of, of depth, but also not being too big, so, you know, kind of the Goldilocks sized firm that we might want to have. I also thought the, the knowledge of land use for their lead attorney was very, very deep. It was, I think, I think extremely impressive and, and they also kind of showed up and, and they knew certain things, like, you know. We, you know, they, they had, they had done their homework a bit and I think MHTL kind of automatically has that homework done for them because they're familiar with, with the town. But, you know, I, I, there, there wasn't enough in the MHTL interview to really push me over to feel like MTC was. The wrong choice. I think what Mr. Wells has said here too of like the idea of potentially holding on for them a year. I would rather just make a decision and, and, and go with it. I, I see where that's coming from. I, I, but I also agree that I don't think that we need to make that decision tonight. I think we've heard some good. Thoughts from all of the members and it does seem like we have at least an agreement that there are two of these firms that we would be. That we're most interested in, I think, with gratitude for Harrington Heap and KP Law for, for submitting proposals. So, Mr. Milano, I'm curious from your perspective. If you've got any thoughts, if you've heard from any department heads or if there's anything else that you'd like to add to that, and then Mr. Wells.
Thank you.
No, I appreciate the conversation. I think I have not gone through this process. And whether it's in Milton or another community, I thought this was helpful and I think evaluating the materials, meeting with. The different firms, I had, you know, more opportunity to do so because we did kind of two full rounds of interviews with all, all four firms. So I've seen them multiple times now. We had reached out and requested. Links to videos where they presented and spoke at meetings, had an opportunity to review that, do reference checks and speak to other communities. So I think the process has been really helpful. I think everybody here is really qualified, certainly. For me, I think some of the themes that members have raised, I agree with in terms of. Greater depth at KP and Me Talon than at MHTL presently. So I, I think that as a plus for those two firms and weigh that against the, the smaller general municipal council services that. The attorneys that MHTL are currently providing. But the other factor is cost in my mind and I think where the board seems to be circling. Based on this discussion is between MHTL and Me Talon, and I think those two firms offer the most opportunity for a cost control.
I was going to mention that and, and my point about MTC is just they. They, they seem to, they had a cost structure that I, I found appealing, especially compared with KP Law.
Yes, and so their hourly rates were lower. Me Talon and MHTL are basically pretty similar in hourly rates. Me Talon offers a flat fixed fee where it's all in regardless of what kind of litigation incurs, so. Thinking about the budget, thinking about, you know, enable it, enabling everybody to have the conversations with counsel if it's been approved. Without worrying, what is my bill going to look like next month? We have that today with MHTL because a lot of it is covered under the flat fee seventy-five thousand dollar retainer. It works well with MHTL. Obviously litigation is billed at an hourly rate, so I think the conversation that the board has had. I could see myself working with all four of the firms. I'm, I'm flexible, so the board's direction, we're, we're, we're willing to enable to jump in. But I think the discussion that you have had is, matches with my take on the situation in general. Mr. Wells.
So just a couple of points, because to Mr. Daly, so it is true that the talk has been, this, this has surfaced over the past years. But it was never from a select boardroom, it was always from a warrant committee because they felt we should bid legal services. But the feeling that I've always known was that the town was so happy with MHTL that they resisted that. And I remember coming in my first year and, and that was a discussion that David Burns was chairing had with me and said, we were getting pressure then that year for the warrant committee. They want to look at it, because they're always looking at money, they're always looking, it wasn't so much the people behind representing. And the second aspect of that bench, I will say this. Just thinking of the, the variety of complex issues that I've seen come before these boards in the town over the past few years. And I've, this has been, every one of them says, that I've talked to, has said this to me, having that bench is critical. I'm not going to say that I didn't worry about the bench and, and the last thing is I believe the reason they made the change was. Because we didn't interview them initially and I think they thought, they came up with, we got to do something and so that's what they did. And, and in hindsight, we should have, just out of respect to them, we should have had them in here, they shouldn't have been lost, they should have been first. It just, and that's, I'm, I regret that. That is a regret I have right now myself, so. As I said, this is something that will outlive regardless if there is a change made and it seems that the three of you. And the town administrator want to do that, this is something that you'd be making that's going to live, be honest, you don't want all this. Because then you're known as flipping, you don't see changes very often. I mean. The two other towns comparable to us that we're always compared to when Nana can, and. What's the other one? They have Dedham, do they have Dedham? No, they don't have Dedham. Nana can need them. There were two other communities that they had similar to us and they still have them today, so. That's my two cents, but you guys can do what you want. Like, I'm obviously in the minority here.
Do you want to share who your number one was before?
If it had not been Murphy Hesse, KP Law, based on.
Sucks.
All three of those conversations, the importance of having a diverse bench. And just some of my in-town colleagues from other communities, the reputation, like you gave me two towns, he gave me two towns that KP Law had. I made inquiries to both of them and the one thing both of them said, depth and. I know we're not dealing with it right now, but I'm telling you, the one thing I can guarantee you is freshman. Because I'm living as a freshman in another world right now, you have no idea what's going to happen here tomorrow, you just don't know.
Well, so I think this has been good food for thought and it's been a good conversation. I might suggest that we continue to ruminate on this a bit. Our next meeting is on the ninth, so it's not too far off. And, yes, sorry, Ms. Hegarty.
Yeah, I mean. Usually when I get to this type of a place in a procurement where it's close with two candidates. What's, what's the thing that we want to know, right? Like, what do we, what do we need to go back and figure out? Is there a question that we need to ask? What's the? Like, what are we, what, what are we resistant to? Or what do we really need to unpack or understand to get comfortable with one or the other?
That's a good question.
Right?
Yeah.
And how do we, how do we uncover that?
Give you an analogy if I may.
Yep.
So for the six months prior to you getting here and for the year of us on this board. The main issue we've had to deal with in this room has been what department? And I, I don't say this in accusative, like what has been our greatest challenges to deal with this past year? What have we had to deal with? No, 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 internally, 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 yeah. It's pretty easy. I mean, we just had a nine-point-five million dollar ride, what would, I mean, was the school, was balancing the school budget?
Yep.
And look what the schools did, who did they pick to come in to right the ship? Part of the reason they did, it's not just his skill as an administrator, his institutional knowledge of the system and, and I just give that, and that's why. I, I can't underscore how important that is and I. And that, that, that is the only other thing that I put next to bench strength. Bench strength is critical, critical.
And just add a comment to that, I, I agree on the institutional knowledge question and I don't want to appear to be. Inclined.
You already do.
I'm really not.
They know it too, people know it. I just, I've told them this several times, like.
But I, I also want the board to make a decision based on the facts that. Anyway, I, in terms of institutional knowledge, I don't disagree and I agree, like I, I'm only three years in. It's funny that Town Clerk and I are talking about it and if we didn't have Jimmy Mullin to call at times, I think that's, you know, that institutional knowledge is truly important. But this would now be the third attorney at MHTL in three years, Kevin Fry Tag to Peter Melo to Kate Conley, so. That knowledge exists within the firm. You know, former town council John Flynn is retired, so like there is knowledge with the firm, but it's not necessarily with the applicants. So I, I just don't want that, I, I worry about that a little bit because I think. In terms of how much there is there and if that's a question that we want to chase down a little bit.
I have, I have a nuance on the institutional knowledge piece, which I don't want to say is not important or discredit at all. But I think there's a difference between going back to an old hand to steady the ship when. There's a big problem, right? In an operational capacity. The, the law firm that we select moving forward, that's, we are their client, like they're our agent. Like, the institutional knowledge is important with us, right? And having that in like the right places. I mean, it's, it's good, it's helpful to have that in, in one of your agents or a group that you're outsourcing to. But I, you know, I also think that, you know, from, from what I've observed, there've been, there've been some challenges with this firm. And I don't know, I don't know if we've always gotten their best, their best people and. I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm, I'm just, we're all airing it out right now.
And if there's something we can request or to probe on that issue, if it's important to the board, we're happy to do that or, or we can try to get an answer on that or. Try to find more tangible feedback, I think to your point in terms of what are the decision factors that would contribute to the board kind of making a final call here.
Mr. Daly.
I would say what, to Remember Hegarty's question about what would we be looking for, I would want to have some of those conversations that Member Wells has had. Maybe with some other folks that I've worked with, Murphy Hesse over time and see if they do have concerns. About what would happen if they went to a new firm. I think the law is the law. I don't know if institutional knowledge plays as big a part in this role. They're going to understand the law, they're going to have the history of how to apply it, how to address it, maybe some questions about the bench. But I think one of the questions we had when we went into this process was that Murphy Hesse no longer has the bench that they used to have. That was part of our conversation as well. So I would want to, out of respect for the process, to continue to have some conversations because this is the first one we've had. Institutional knowledge, less important to me in terms of what will they do as a new, if a new firm came in, what is their process coming in? Do we have the confidence that they can catch up very quickly? Will those office hours actually happen? Which I think every firm told us they would hold, but I don't think we've had them over the last few years, right? So promises, promises made, promises have to be kept. In terms of sort of using the, the schools as an example, I think there's also the idea that someone like a new superintendent is coming in with new eyes. He's been away for a while, so while he has some knowledge of what the town was, it's not what he was when he left. And he's coming with a different experience and a different view of how to, how to execute some of these things as well, so there is also the, the view of a new set of eyes. What can that offer us? Because perhaps we've been a bit complacent. Perhaps we are a bit stuck and there, you know, we're talking about revenue, housing, changes, like really kind of updating what we're doing as a town. And perhaps a different firm would offer that. But I do have an immense respect for history and folks that have put in the time and have worked. For the people of Milton, and so I think we will stop and go have those conversations and ask those questions.
So maybe what we could do, Mr. Milano, is ask both MTC and MHTL to provide a couple of references. That we could, that we could call up individually, I know Mr. Wells has already had some individual calls. And then if you also, Mr. Milano, have suggestions for people that we could reach out to at the, at towns managed by MTC or MH, MHTL. I think that would be helpful for Mr. Daly, Ms. Hegarty, myself and Mr. Wells if he wants to continue to have those conversations. And then if we could get that information at some point by the end of this week. We would have a week plus to make calls and, and ask around and also I will say, I've, I'm, I'm sure others have, but I've also heard from, from members of, in, within Milton. With their thinking on this, so it would also give us time for more public feedback to the select board. And then optimally, we, we might have enough information at that point to make a decision on September ninth. Does that sound like, Mr. Wells?
Did any of you interview the department heads or the citizens that were on the first interviews?
I talked to some.
Not the, not the town department, I've done.
I talked to moderator, I talked to, and.
I talked to the moderator.
They had a different thought than you had, not, not, and they, I don't think they got to interview. Yeah, they did, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they interviewed all four.
But it was current, not, not the panel, not the panel.
They were all there though. It was, from MHTL is Peter, Kate and Karis.
Okay.
With Peter as lead in answering most of the questions, to be clear.
I mean, we've talked about it a lot, so I think it's important to do that and then come and make the decision sooner versus later. My only question is, what about the two significant cases? That was one of the things John brought up today. As you know, he's in court now on six forty-eight, six fifty-two and they, MHTL is, and Lower Guile is going any day and that's, okay, that's.
Throughout the interview process, all of the firms all said there is going to be stuff that we would recommend that you keep with regular counsel. As long as MHTL would, would finish those. For six forty-eight, six fifty-two Canton Ave, the town filed the dispositive motion, we're waiting on a, on a ruling on that. And then Lower Guile, yes, we just filed all the testimony, the public, the site visit is in early October with the public hearing in October. And my view would be that they're knee-deep in that, it wouldn't make sense for anybody to change that. And continue to use them. Yeah. Okay, so it sounds like we have some agreed upon next steps here and I agree with Mr. Wells, I don't think we want to wait too long to make the decision on this, so I. Think that when we come back on the ninth, we should be able to, to make a decision. Great. If there's nothing further on that, then we'll move to item eight, the warrant article, October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five special town meeting. Warrant articles for potential inclusion on the warrants. First, can I get a motion to open the warrant?
I'll make a motion open one.
Motion's been made, the second, second by Mr. Daly. We have to vote on that, yeah. All in favor of opening the warrant?
Aye.
Mr. Milano, do you want to let us know, we've got a couple of redlined sheets here on the, for article, this is for what would supposedly be article seven.
Yes, so this is the alcohol on town land article. There are two versions in the packet, the ones we've been sharing with the board all along. The bigger redlined with the gray comments on the right-hand side, that is actually smaller, it was submitted by Mike Zulus reflecting. Suggestions that came out of the town meeting and follow-up from there. The, the other version is a shorter version that I had drafted, kind of reflecting some of the same discussion that had happened. So really where, where left. So really where, where left is, I think the intention behind them is similar, to, to try to add more control and, and within the bylaw itself. The version that I had initially drafted left some decisions to the select board to be made kind of later, not include them in the bylaw itself. The one written and submitted that's longer from Mr. Zulus again, has more stipulations that are in the bylaw that I think they're all thing, I don't know that anybody disagrees with them necessarily broad, broadly. And I think that came out of the conversation accordingly. You know, there's, there's requirements in there about wristbands, about, now, no advertisement. I think the key difference really between the two gets down to if there's going to be required to be a cordoned off area where alcohol service would be allowed. For example, if you're using I don't know, Wharf Park, for example, you couldn't under this version allow alcohol service anywhere within Wharf Park. There would have to be a, a smaller area within the park itself where the alcohol consumption would have to take place. And that is something I've seen in, in Boston. They do it that way. The way that the other one that I drafted says, the select board may require that, but doesn't it leaves it to more of a case-by-case determination. If there are smaller locations, that, that wouldn't necessarily be feasible. So it doesn't require it. Or alternatively, if alcohol consumption would be allowed at Wharf Park, then nobody under the age twenty-one would be entering it in those, in that case, because it would have to be twenty-one plus only.
Right, or you got a little tiny corner that's
Right, so I, I think that is one of the key differences. I think a lot of the other requirements in the longer one could probably be rolled into, into both or combined from the discussions that we've been having. I think that was the main kind of decision point, is how do we want to control the actual location where a one-day license might be allowed? And how strictly does the site plan want to be laid out for that?
Thoughts or questions from the members?
So, Corey, I've signed hundreds of liquor licenses here over, over the years. You know, this is not something that we have an issue with. The discretion on any individuals should lie with us, you know? It's a big difference between if the MAC's having its open Friday and they want to have it outside on, on June, July, and August. And some are wanting to have something, I don't know anywhere in town, because I think, are we admitting parks in this? Are parks included?
It's included if the commission, park commissioners and the select board want to sign off on it.
I think something more significant, I know that the three fiftieth was at the high school. It was a huge event. But alcohol was rampant because we could not there was no way to prevent, so people just brought it by, and it was, there's so many people came with, so I'm just going to go from my experience in especially thirteen years running Milton Music Festivals, which is one of the biggest things in town. It's on private, Eustace is private. There's all the wake field, they're all having them. I'm, I think the discretion on any event between this board, the, the the town minister and the police chief who weighs in and signs on every single one of them. I think some of the things that Mr. Zulus had put in there, we can on any individual case, I mean, you, you're not going to need wristbands outside the MAC, or if they want to have a thing on a Friday night at Wharf Park with a hundred, two hundred people, like, I don't think you're going to need it for all that. And the other issue is, is you heard from the police chief, we never had a single incident. Even, even Milton Music Fest, which gets hundreds and thousands of people now, never had a single incident. So not to say things can't happen, but I'm comfortable with your, your condensed version. I really want to give the, the board discretion on a specific event, as well as the police chief. I don't have to make him do a thousand things that you know, a lot of small, like, the MAC's not going to be a business to have to do stuff like that.
I mean, this to me kind of speaks to I am not a fan of over prescribing in a bylaw or any type of reg because the operation of it can be very different in the end. And especially when it's written from somebody outside of the operational activity, it's, it's problematic. So I actually, I, I do like the one that you have, Nick, because it is condensed. It's clear, it's easy to read. And leaves some things at the discretion of the town employees who operate the event.
You okay with that?
Mr. Daley, any thoughts?
I'm not sure we really need this argument, but I like some of the things in the expanded version. Non-transferable bracelets. The age being laid out, maybe there are a few things in there that I'd like to see added to your version, Nick. I can highlight a couple more, I'm looking at it here very quickly.
But you might be low on your mic.
Am I low? This is just not my night.
It's not my night.
I think it's like, it's sitting on your collar like upside down or something.
This is how the influencers do it.
Winston's back in campaign mode, he's got his mini mic.
So if, if we could add a couple of those pieces, and I can talk to you from outside here, is what I think would be useful in the article.
Well, yes, and I think
Is there anything critically missing, though?
We would, we would want to get from a timing perspective, I think we would want to try to have this over to the warrant committee, like, this week, if we decided to include it. So I'm fine with so, for example, based on your comments, Winston, I could imagine saying in, in Mr. Milano's version on number two, we could just easily put non-transferable age-identifying wristbands at the beginning of that, and then that takes care of that. Right?
Yeah.
So let's, if there's anything else in here, so, so if there's anything else that you think is critical to, to include, why don't you suggest it now? We can discuss it. We want to add it.
My only other question other than the wristbands would be the caterers licenses? Is, why is that included in the, in this longer version? Because that's
It's here.
It's in both, actually.
It's in both, because I've been a proponent of that since we went out, pursued it to make sure that, because that, the caterer's license No, that's okay. I was just looking at only the highlighted red portions. If it's in the first one, I'm okay. It has so many restrictions in it versus you come, Winston Daley, and you want to have you want to rent the MAC for night. I don't think, I don't think the MAC all out, but let's see, you want to rent a Well, the MAC uses the caterers licenses. They do, because they don't want to deal with the one day, they don't want you coming in and then you getting like Milton Music Fest, we used to apply for one day, we don't, we want the, because it has so many of the restrictions in the statute already built into it, tip serving, training, all that, that's and the other thing that we need to remember is the inside one already applies with none of this. So you can rent, you know, you can rent this only was sculpted out as the outside, when we tried to, remember that we passed it on the inside buildings, it doesn't have any of this stuff in it. So I, so I don't want to make it too I think, I, I hear you saying, but I, I'm fine with the fact that the board and the department heads have the discretion on any, because no two are the same. At least the public safety bones and me are like comfortable with that.
Yeah, I, I do think it's important to, like, the select board doesn't always, like, we you know, when we get applications for one-day liquor licenses now, like, we usually kind of know, oh, it's the David Chestnut Jazz Festival, so we know. Like, if we get something for somebody to have a giant kegger at Kelly Field, we're probably going to say, no.
Also, too, I mean, we, so
That's it, I mean.
That's it. We don't need a regulation that says no keggers at Kelly.
Looking between the two of them, so you know, the, the more dense one, we have a select board shall
Yeah, you don't, you gotta give the select board discretion.
Board may, like
Yeah.
Yeah, like, it's just
You or me?
We need the appropriate, the appropriate contours of a reg and not too much.
So if everyone
And I think that substantively, if this, if this covers the public safety aspects that everybody, you know, we get to think of the outcome, right? We want a safe event. We want to make sure that, that the sale of alcohol is regulated, that the proper people view it before we get to the endpoint, et cetera. As long as this does it, like, we don't need to meddle in it too much.
Okay.
I agree.
I'll take a motion then.
I'll make a motion to approve does it have a number on it? Seven as amended by Mr. Milano, how's that?
Yeah, and the only, for, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, don't.
I just had a clarifying question. The only change that has been made so far has been just to clarify that there are age-identifying non-transferable wristbands.
Yes.
So that will be required.
You want to do that at all of them? Or you want to make that the discretion of the board?
No, I think that, I mean, it does, those are, it's just those like
Okay, I feel fine with that, okay.
They're pretty, pretty simple.
Just again, looking in, in other the other one I wanted to ask about was in, in response to your question, and is, is there any land that the board would want to exclude? Or such language as, which was in, is in the longer one, it's Roman numeral seven, no such one-day license shall be issued for town land that includes a playground and/or children's play space areas? Or again, that could be left to the discretion of the park commissioners.
Yeah, because then it's like, what's a children's play space area?
Right, yeah, let's just leave that to discretion. I mean, you got to give the select boards credit for making rational decisions, you know, like common sense has to play into this, and the chief as well, because the chief's got to sign off on this.
So Mr. Wells has made the motion, have a second?
Second.
A seconded by Mr. Daley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we'll send that over to the warrant committee. Mr. Milano. Do we have anything on any of the other warrant articles?
Have you approved, did you approve any of these?
I think we've approved. They've all been approved for the warrant.
Yeah. I know the warrant committee just, just signed off on one last night, I think.
Already?
But I think we've, yeah, they've already gotten through one. I'm, they're, they want to talk to me about the light trespass article, so I'm setting up time there.
And the public hearing just is going, for the zoning articles as required under the law will be held at the planning board's meeting on September eleventh.
Okay.
So everything else has been approved for the warrants, and is with the warrant committee at this time.
I will say the warrant committee chair is very happy about the, getting all the information in several weeks before the meeting, so hopefully there will be very
She not getting any emails?
Green sheets. I'm still getting emails.
You want to motion close?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to close the warrant.
A motion to close the warrant, seconded by Mr. Daley.
You, Ms. Hagerty.
All in favor?
What?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Mr. Milano, item number nine, East Milton Fire Station RFP visioning session with assistance from NA PC.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we had discussed this briefly, excuse me, briefly at our last meeting. We have a proposal from NA PC for approximately six thousand dollars. I don't have the exact amount right in front of me.
Six thousand, I thought it was twelve hundred.
No, that's, the total is, is different phases. So to facilitate a visioning session
Fifty-six hundred.
Fifty-six hundred. A visioning session regarding the potential disposition of the current East Milton Fire Station. And we're, we are targeting likely October to have that. We'll try to obviously do that in East Milton to solicit feedback and ideas and thoughts as we put together an RFP for that site. As it will be vacated, hopefully within a year from now, for the new East Milton station.
Great. Do you need action, Mr. Wells?
So two points. Because I went back and looked them, as I sat in the fire station, and they were meeting tonight, so I hate to go back into history, but when we purchased the land to build the, the, the new station, and we spent nine hundred thousand dollars. We went to the town meeting and asked for for nine hundred thousand dollars. But part of our promise then, and the fire station building committee's promise was we would sell the old building at the time it was done, which you know, they estimated was worth between three quarters of a million and a million dollars, and that that money can go back into the town's coffers. So I think that's going to come to us. I think we're gonna, I think, I think you've already heard from Chair Walsh, right, that didn't he come here while I was away and ask you to tell you like to sell it?
Yeah.
I don't know I don't know that we're able yet to decide where that money goes if we do sell it, but I think one thing that we do know, there's a commercial interest in it at that value, and to quote you, who says all the time, we need more commercial space. And not that this is, but a million dollars is a million dollars, and one of the things that people don't realize that I talk about a lot is that the amount of just, and I don't know what could go in there, but let's say it was something that generated similar taxes to, you know, Navara, Abbey, Stale, and Ryan, those, the meals taxes that we get are significant in this town that we never got years ago. And as we know already, and I've read some of the correspondence that you've got while I was out of the country, that the financial pressures have not gone away here. So that's, my only thought is, are we, should we decide? Are we going to decide to sell it? Or put it on RFP to get the best available dollar for it? Because if you get into a visioning, and you get into nine, I mean, you saw, we went through in the discovery school, I mean, it took years. And the last thing that I, and I, well, I probably won't be here, but I say this especially to the three of you, especially the two of you who are just starting, is you don't want that fire station, the new fire station opening, that building sitting there empty in the square. You want to try and this is an opportunity, we want to try and move in this now. And you did get interest on the RFP that you sent out, and I know that that interest exists, and I know it's just one, but I know there are others, so this is my thought. I don't want to, I think time is very important, because they're going to have that station done sooner than later.
Yeah, I, I don't
Fair enough.
Yeah, I don't think there's any real interest from, for, at least from me, I can speak for myself to, for retaining the, a building that we can I don't think we have a lot of uses for, as, from a town perspective, but we can certainly, you know, use it from a commercial perspective.
Right.
So I, but I don't think that that's going through with this process here with the RFP envisioning statement is more of a asking, you know, making, A, making sure that these Milton folks feel like they have input into what's, what's happening here. And B, to kind of understand what kind of business.
Could go in there, okay. Because it is going to be difficult. It will be.
Yeah, it's not like there's a ton of parking there or anything, so.
You have to maintain the four corners, it's a historic building, you're not going to be able to
Right.
Tear it down.
Is it a historic building?
Yeah, similar, same to the MAC, so is the MAC.
So, Mr. Milano, do you need action from us on this, or this is more of an update?
No, as long as the board is okay to move forward. And the only additional context to that is that if the board could be so inclined to say, or the community could say, we really want this kind of a commercial use, so the RFP could say, okay, we want a commercial use, and applicants who focus on this type of uses, we're going to score more highly and take into account cost as well as the preferred use. So it's just, it's another kind of information gathering point to help inform the evaluation criteria that are critical to the RFP.
If what comes out of this is the residents want something that's not the highest dollar, or not the biggest financial windfall for us, do we then reject it? Do we go with what the residents say? Or?
That's, that's the job of the board.
Well, that's why
It's a hard decision.
I wanted to make that point because that was part of our argument when we went, when this the existing board went to town meeting and asked for nine hundred and something thousand dollars to buy the land, was that I believe it was Webb Collins who did the presentation from the fire station building committee, which gave a presentation that the building, the existing building was between seven fifty and a million, and you would use the sale of that to offset
Okay.
the borrowing that you were asking for. Because that nine hundred thousand was never thought of. We never expected that we were going to be buying a piece of land to build the fire. It was never Mike Zulus and I were the two that, we negotiated with the archdiocese for the town, the two of us.
I mean, you know, with the discovery schoolhouse, it was really more of a, what does, what was the market going to bear? There was a sense among certain people that the RFP process was faulty, or that, you know, that, what the discovery bid was, was not up to market value. And then, so they made them go through the process again, same thing, same result.
Same amount, same dollar.
And so I think it's, for, my lesson from that is more of a, learn what the market teaches you. And, you know, you can have a vision of, you know, a pottery barn or whatever that you want to put there. But ultimately, if what comes through is something else, then that's, the town has to make those decisions, that, that's what we'll do there, or we won't do anything.
Well, the school pressures weighed into that in the beginning was, you know, do we make that, convert that, and it just didn't work for them. And so we kind of lost a window of what was a really, might have been a much more financial benefit commercially, had we sold, and by the time, and so you're right, we bid at, discovery school bid twice and the same price both times.
Okay.
It took two years to do it. And that's, that's why I'm saying that going a little way too long. Just my thought.
Yep. Okay, so if there's nothing more on that, then we'll move to item ten, useful life designations for various capital equipment and vehicle purchases approved by town meeting. Mr. Milano, I'm assuming that this is what we've got here. Mr. Milano, I'm assuming that this is what we've got here, this little spreadsheet with pickup trucks and transit vans and all sorts of fun things.
Yes, in order to issue. I'm sorry?
No, that's already happening. We, you don't need a motion for the visit.
No, we are, we can go ahead and we'll, we'll get that scheduled and start working on the agenda for that.
Moving right along.
This is a, in order to issue debt for capital equipment, we're restricted to a maximum borrowing term of five years under the law unless the select board determines that the useful life of the equipment is longer than that. And when we put together the capital budget, we request the department heads submit what their anticipated useful life of the equipment is. So what this vote is asking is that the select board agree and set useful life expectancies for this equipment as shown on this chart. And this useful life is also voted by the town meeting when the capital budget is approved. So all this has been approved by the capital committee, really the select board already and town meeting. But in order to check the box in finality, we're asking the board to vote it as well. And on the chart, the, the useful life that we expect for this equipment is in the, in the column labeled useful life vote at town meeting. And I'll share it on the screen. But it can be voted as presented.
You want a motion?
Yeah, I don't know that, does anybody feel like discussing this in detail? I'll take a motion.
I knew you would. I'm moved that the select board determines that the maximum useful life of capital equipment approved at the 2024 and 2025 annual town meeting shall be displayed on the chart below in the column labeled useful life vote at town meeting. It's listed on the screen here. What is the motion? That's, that's the motion, right?
Seconded by Ms. Hagerty. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item 11, select board retreat. So I still think that this is something that we really ought to find time to do in September. So if we can all take two minutes to look at our calendars and find.
We have penciled in.
We have a pencil in, we have a pencil in. Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Milano.
October 4th was the date the other members are available.
That's right.
Sorry, October 4th.
Yeah.
Oh, God, I have something, I don't know, hold on, let me look. I just, I'm not here.
You're hanging out with us, Richard.
It's pan mass, it's pan masked, unpaved in the Berkshire's. I've already committed to work it. As soon as you just said it, but I can't be October 4th. No, I can't do the 4th. My bad.
Can we do the 3rd?
Yeah, I could do the 3rd, yeah. If we could do it in the, I'd be leaving probably by five o'clock. I don't know.
That morning?
Oh, I could do that morning, the 3rd in the morning, I could do that.
I have a board meeting. What about the Sunday, the 5th?
I'm back.
Can we do Sunday afternoon?
Do you want?
Is football on?
Oh, you can see what the.
Do you look at the schedule? Do you know what's on the schedule? Do you want a clock game?
It's fine, I don't care. I'm joking, we're good, October 5th.
You expecting something out of this team?
Put the TV on.
Yeah.
Playoffs.
You expecting playoffs?
Playoffs.
I was too, but I have to, I listen to.
It's a, it's a, it's a night game against the Bills, 8:20 PM.
Is it really, it's a night game? Oh, yeah, I could do Sunday. That's the 5th, where.
All right.
All right, so 5th, maybe let's say we could get lunch and.
That's fine.
And then meet in the afternoon.
Where we gonna do it? Want us to go to Corona? Or you want to go somewhere?
What's a good trust fall location?
So we've gone to Curry, I can call, do you want me to call? We've had him at Curry before, do you want me to, I'll look, kids, kids will be there on the 5th.
We've had it in the Council on Aging. The new fire station meeting room is available. We can take.
Well, let's use the new fire station meeting.
That'll work out. I was gonna say, I was gonna say the MAC too, I thought of that.
Oh, the MAC? They're getting new windows in. And I don't know if they're gonna be open actually in October. I was just talking to Kevin on Saturday. I think they might be closed at that first weekend of October.
Speaking of that.
I can inquire if interested.
So if the MAC, if they're available, if not, I think the new fire station meeting room is a nice option.
Okay.
And start time, I'm sorry, was?
Why don't we say we'll start at 12 and we'll have lunch?
All right, sounds good.
And then everybody can, we can be well done before the kickoff against the Bills.
It's on my schedule.
Okay. Item number 12, select board policies and code of conduct. Mr. Milano.
I don't have any new update. We're pulling together some examples to distribute and share with the board to, to discuss further in terms of a potential code of conduct.
Okay, and then, but for item 13, I believe you do have an update for us? That's gonna be training for elected board members.
Yes, I've been, I've received a name, reached out, working on firming up some details, but somebody who came highly recommended and hopefully to have more news in the next week or so.
Okay, great.
Which is all boards?
This is, would be for all boards, you know. Elected, elected boards.
Okay.
All right, well, then moving straight along to item 14. We have discussion approval boards and committees appointments. I don't know if somebody feels like making some motions.
I'm chair of that committee, so I don't make the, I don't make the motion, but I'll vote.
Mr. Daley, do you want to make some motions?
All right. Motion to approve the members for, what is this? The Capital Improvement Planning Committee.
Yeah.
Move to reappoint the following individuals to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee for a one-year term. Amy Dexter, Thomas McCarthy, Elizabeth Carroll, Jim Davis, John Driscoll, John Folcarelli, and Michael Hale.
I'll second. Did you want to second, Mr. Wells?
You got it, you second, go ahead. I'm ready, aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Daley, you want to continue?
All right, move to appoint Lorraine D to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee for a one-year term.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move to appoint Brooke Plotkin to the Milton Cultural Council for a three-year term.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wells, all in favor?
Aye.
And move to appoint Helen Russell to the Shade Tree Advisory Committee for a one-year term.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wells, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have now one-day liquor licenses to discuss. Barn Fest is coming up.
Yes, hold on, where are you, what number are you at?
Number 15.
Okay. So I move to appoint one-day liquor license for Forbes House Museum, Bar Fest, September 4th and 6 to 9. Trustees, September 6th, 2025, from 3 PM to 5 PM for jazz concert at the Hutchinson Field? Is that Hutch?
Yes.
Hutchinson Field? Did you get a, like a parking, did you get any kind of plan on that? Just that some, that's just, I just, I'll make that as a motion, but you want to look at that. You have to have a parking place because they have no parking there. And Saint Agatha's Parish, September 13th, 2025, 5 through to 9 PM for a parish festival.
Motions by, made by Mr. Wells.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Daley, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next up, we have discussion approval of meeting minutes.
So I'm gonna do a motion to keep, I'm gonna do a motion to do without me the 13th, no, not the 13th, June 30th.
Not June 30th, you went there either.
May 21st.
There you go.
June 16th.
Yep, June 10th also.
And June 10th. June 30th, remember, I wasn't there June 30th.
And June 17th?
Did it say 17, oh, yeah, 17th.
And June 20th?
And June 20th, I said the 20th.
And the 26th, did you say?
26th, they said all those.
Okay.
I second.
Okay, second, made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm standing on the 13th and 30th.
So can I get a motion on those two?
I'd like to move to approve the meeting minutes dated May 13th, 2025, and June 30th, 2025.
Okay, I'll, I'll second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Wells, I'm standing.
I'm standing.
Okay, so now we are moving on to the town administrators report. Mr. Milano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's the night before first day of school, as most folks are aware, so traffic will be returning to Milton.
You're clearly aware.
Right and early. So we welcome back, the teachers have been back for a couple of days. Welcome back all the students as well. The Cunningham Project is complete and, except for some lighting that needs to be installed, those classrooms and offices are open. So appreciate the work of Consolidated Facilities, School Department, and B C Construction and the O P M is Hill I Row and the designers are Arrow Street. So that was a tough project to pull off the summer and it went very smoothly. So appreciate everybody's work on that. I missed the night out at Milton Police this week while I was away on vacation. And unfortunately, they did get rain, but I did hear they had strong attendance. Regardless, just fingers crossed for better weather next year. And then lastly, I just wanted to share, and I shared this with the board, is that we, ahead of a upcoming debt issuance in September, we were, had a ratings call with S and P Global Ratings last Friday. And S and P has affirmed the town's triple A bond rating. They, you know, they've, they typically comment on factors that are positive and factors that are negative. You know, recognize the town's continued budget results overall, where we continue to bring in revenues over expectation and continuing to build reserves and maintain our reserve ratio. The S and P did ask about the fiscal '25 school budget and how that was addressed through the year. So some questions around how that will be managed going forward, which we answered and responded to. They did flag OPEB as potential credit risk. And they are more direct about it than they have been in, in recent years. The good thing for the town is that we are fully funded on the pension liability. So right now, we're putting more money into the pension system than we need to to build a reserve in the pension system. That's about a million dollars a year. And we're using one and a half million dollars a year to put in the OPEB trust. So last year was the first year, we contributed 1.5 million. Now we're contributing a little bit over 1.5 in fiscal '26. And we, the policy states that we'll continue to do that. So we have a funding plan in place. If and when the retirement board adjusts their funding schedule, that might make more money available to contribute to OPEB. So we have a outstanding liability, about $139 million on OPEB, which is essentially retiree health insurance and a few other benefits. It's 2.5% funded, so we have a long way to go. The position that we are in is of a position of strength is that we have achieved funding on the pension system. So that long-term liability pressure is, has been addressed and hopefully it will remain full funding. So now we can more directly address the OPEB one, but I just mentioned it because it was a credit risk they identified. They called it out specifically. So just to flag it as something that they're, they're keeping an eye on, but we have an OPEB policy, we're adhering to it. And it means that we just need to make sure we continue to adhere to it moving forward. So overall.
How do we compare to other, our peers on our OPEB liability and funding?
We're, we're certainly low on the OPEB side. But as an counter example, I think Norfolk County Retirement just pushed out the retirement system funding date to 2033 or 2035. And they had been 2029 at one point. So all of those communities that, they still have eight more years to go on the retirement side where we're ahead of them. So they might be slightly ahead of us on OPEB, but we should be able to hopefully catch up and surpass because we're able to focus on just one of the two crushing liabilities that cities and towns face. But we're on the low side. But we have a policy in place. That's why we put the policy in place because it was low. And we're gonna steadily build that. The money gets transferred to OPEB trusts and then it's invested with P R I T, with the state retirement system.
Yeah.
So the earnings are, stay with the trust. So it grows beyond just the contributions that the town makes into it.
Okay.
Plus, I think, isn't our, isn't the town's pensions like 11? It's in like the top pension systems in Norfolk County, even though we're a sole.
Yeah, we're one of the few that are fully funded.
One of the three that are, yeah, we're definitely in the driver's seat.
It's a good place to be. So, and it's decisions that were made many years ago by prior boards and prior warrant committees to, to get that done and by the retirement board as well to get that done. And it, and it puts us in stronger financial position moving forward, so.
Big shout out to Katie Conlon.
No, right, all, all that attention.
That was her baby, like, from the time she was on the warrant committee through the 10 years she served on this board. She, she really made each year the town focus on this as an important aspect.
And an easier decision back then would have been to say, well, let's just push back the full funding date, but then we would be dealing with both issues rather than just the one. So that's, that's it for my report. Will, will the ratings report, if anybody wants to see it, is on the town accounting website. We'll, we'll put it up on the front page and share it. So it's available and accessible for people to review and, and digest.
Great. For the chair's report, the only thing I want to flag for folks is the Chamber of Commerce is doing their first Friday on the East Milton Deck again this year. It'll be September 5th, which is a Friday, starting 4 PM, maybe even earlier than that. And it was a really great time last year. A lot of local businesses are out, local musicians are out. So I would encourage folks to come to that and keep your fingers crossed for good weather. But I don't have anything else from the chair's side. Public response, public comment response.
I think, I think we've pretty much covered that.